If you wish to donate, please go to nevadaveteransmemorial.org. And that's all for this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. We appreciate you watching. As for me, this is the final program that I'll be hosting. It's been a privilege and an honor serving the citizens of Sparks, and I appreciate you tuning in. From all of us at the City of Sparks, thank you.
Even if no one in your home smokes, secondhand smoke can be closer than you think. Secondhand smoke from a neighbor's apartment can enter your home through air vents, through light fixtures, and even through cracks in the walls and the floors. Secondhand smoke is toxic, especially to children. Protect your family.
Are you saying tonight we can meet up and study together?
Text me after.
Okay. No!
There is no text, tweet, or call that's worth a life.
One pedestrian death is one too many.
Look up.
Oh, that's...
Okay.
There, we'll save you a little reading.
Hey, uh...
What's your point?
We're to have this 2:00 meeting start.
It got quiet all of a sudden.
It's because it's 2:00.
Is everybody... It's gonna be okay. Nobody's gonna die today, okay? You don't have to be quiet. It's called to order the Sparks City Council Meeting of September 25, 2017. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini, Council Members Abbott, Lawson, Smith, Bybee, Dare, City Attorney Adams, City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, opening ceremonies. We have our favorite pastor, Pastor Barbara West, Sparks Church of Nazareth. If you'd all stand, please, for the opening. Apologize, Pastor. I have trouble standing up, so I'll just...
That's quite all right. God bless your pastor. Appreciate you. Good job, Father. Our heavenly Father, what a privilege to be here today, and thank you for another beautiful day. And Lord, we thank you for the privilege of living in the United States and also for the privilege of living in this great place that we call home, Sparks, Nevada. And we thank you too, Lord, that we have the privilege to pray for this wonderful council, for Mayor Martini, and all of the people who are leading us. And we pray for a kind of blessing upon each one of them, and give them the wisdom to know how to lead us into the future, because our trust is in them and what they're going to do to help us. Thank you for all of the construction and the building that's going on, and for the jobs that that opens up for so many. And we want to thank you too, Lord, for all of our first responders, for our firefighters, for our police officers, and our law enforcement, the EMT, all of those that help us in our city so much. And so now we call upon you to give wisdom to our council members, and we pray that we lead this future into the future, because we've asked you to do so. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Barbara. That was great. If you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, Mr. Landslide. Yeah, it's a good one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, next is public comment. If you want to do public comment on number four, one of these cards, bring it up to our clerk, and she will take care of it for you. First, we have Darlene Hess. Hesse?
Thank you.
Come on up. Is it Hesse?
Yes. I don't know how to put these on, but I sure like some help here. Do you put my pictures on? Hold it on. Okay, show.
Well, I have all of these pictures of the flooding in January, and I want to tell you all, we're not against schools, we're not against education, we're not against high schools. We are for everything, and education is the very most important as far as I'm concerned. But we're not interested in seeing a beautiful property being torn down, a $30 million property, and building a school that no one seems to have an idea of how much the school will cost. And I just want you to see the flooding. It's just unbelievable at times that what we go through, the neighborhood. Now, the one that I really wanted you to see was where the ditch is just almost, or the water is almost flowing right here, flowing over Whittaker. And then I went up beyond the clubhouse on the west side, high up where the fellows maintain, they have their maintenance building, and that was all filled with water also. I talked to one of the fellows that worked there. Later, he said it took two months for that water to go down. Now, for schools, I think it's very important that they be built on another area. And I don't know if anyone watched Sunday's 60 Minutes, but they had all on about floodplains. And I kind of think maybe it's not, I don't know if it's really considered a floodplain or not. We consider it a floodplain. But they say that they put golf courses on floodplains, and that people are not listening to the other people of the community when they talk about floodplains. And they're making a big mistake, like in Houston, that was a floodplain. And did anyone see that? It was very important. It was just a real interesting show on 60 Minutes last night. Anyway, I beg of you people, this is an open space, a beautiful space, and I thought that was what we were all about, to protect areas for animals, for people. The golfers are having a wonderful time out there. I see tournament after tournament over there. And I've been over there a few times, having them sign petitions, and there's only been one person that denied me. But we have lots and lots of names. A lot of people don't even realize about this. So anyway, I hope you reconsider. It's just a real heartfelt thing to save this land, not just for the golfers, but for the animals also. So it's really a very special treasure to all of us and to Sparks and Reno. And why are they calling Wild Creek Reno, Wild Creek? I'd like to know that answer. When I looked it up to see about Wild Creek, they put Reno Wild Creek on there. I hope it's not going to be Reno, and I hope it's not going to be a Hug High School, a Reno school, right there in that property. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Waskey, is it Waskey Griffin?
Letting me come and talk about saving Wild Creek. You know, one of the things I think we miss sometimes today is some of the interesting words that we used, that really come from the past, words like "hornschwaggle." Anybody remember the name hornschwaggle? How about boondoggle? Boondoggle, never heard of boondoggle? That's kind of like hornschwaggle. How about hoodwinked? Yeah, hoodwink, you know. Those are all very interesting words. And I would suggest to you that that's what's going on with the Washoe County School District, trying to put a high school on Wild Creek Golf Course. I have some clips from some of our media here recently about what the Washoe County School District COO said, you know, initially. He said, "This was just the perfect location for the Washoe County School District." I can't say we really had a Plan B. This is a beautiful site, and trying to find acreage in the urban environment there is very difficult. And this was reported by a couple of different people. There were a lot of people that were outraged and were incredulous with this statement. And after that, after they spoke up, then they come back and said, "Well, we do have a Plan B, and we do have a Plan C." There was also, we were told initially that this property needed to be transferred by August. Well, then that's backed off on. Then we come out with this report this weekend, about, actually it was last week, but it's in the paper this weekend, where supposedly a bunch of contractors around town think that Wild Creek is the best area. This was done after the fact. That was, that Plan B and Plan C and Plan, all these different plans supposedly they had, were not in existence before some of these other concerns were brought forward. I would implore you, Sparks City Councilmen and women, to stand up and publicly take a position on this and save this treasure for our community. I realize that you don't have a Drakbota, but you can take a public position, and I think you'll be glad you did.
Thank you, sir. Bill Wagner? Common gold here. That's safety for all citizens of the City of Sparks. Thank you very much, and I hope you folks will someday take a ride up there. Thank you, sir. Kathleen Shoup?
Good afternoon. I'm Kathleen Shoup, and I am here as a representative of the Save Wild Creek organization as well. I found a study, oh, I can't get that up. Oh, there it is. I found a study online about crime in schools, and how it is that when they put schools in areas, that the crime does increase. And our neighborhood is, just almost all of us are in our late 60s and 70s. And not only that, but our houses are very far removed from one another. We're not next-door neighbors as a normal neighborhood is, because we're on, all of us have, like, an acre of land. And I think that makes us a soft target for people with bad intention. And I felt pretty safe up there, because it wasn't very well-known. Our whole area is not very well-known. Our roads aren't generally used. However, that's going to change. If they put a high school up there, we're going to have a lot of traffic, and so we're going to have people with too much energy and no good intentions. Say, buy a gun. I have a gun, but, you know, it scares me more to think about using a gun than it does to think about my house being raided. So I just want to say that, again, here's another reason why we don't want a high school up there. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comments? If you fill out a card, if you want, if you can refer to comment. Okay. We'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council for action. Agenda. Approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order, if not looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Move to approve.
Second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Minutes. Consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of September 11, 2017. Any omissions, deletions, corrections? Okay, looking for a motion, Mr. Dare?
Move to approve.
Have a second? Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Move by Mr. Dare, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve the minutes of the September 11 meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Want to abstain? And you were abstaining?
I wasn't here.
Okay.
I was in Las Vegas, representing Sparks.
That's a good place to be. Okay, any further discussion? It passes unanimously with one abstention. Okay. Moving on to announcements. Commendations. Spanish Springs High School Cougar Marching Band. Who has that one? Go ahead, Chris.
So do we have some of the band up here? That's right. You are, we're leaving. You up there?
Yes.
Wonderful. Wonderful. You want to go and sit down, guys? So I'll read this, and then you guys can have, share a little something about your experience. So this is from the City of Sparks, and from our mayor, and from all of us. This is, whereas the Spanish Springs High School Cougar Marching Band offers opportunities for students from the City of Sparks to excel in the performing arts, including competitive marching band, color guard, percussion ensembles, and concert bands. And whereas the Cougar Marching Band represents the City of Sparks with pride through performances and competitions throughout northern Nevada and northern California areas. And whereas the Cougar Marching Band has earned first place, ooh, nice shot, in their class at the annual Sierra Band Crusade, recognized by the governor as a state championship event in the state of Nevada. And whereas the Cougar Marching Band supports local events by hosting the annual Nevada Day Battle of the Bands. And whereas the Nevada Day Battle of the Bands provides an educational competitive event for all the high school music programs in the region. And whereas the Nevada Day Battle of the Bands is celebrating the hosting of its fifth annual tournament on October 27, 2017. Now, therefore, Gino Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, joined with the city council, commending and congratulating the members of the Spanish Springs Cougar Marching Band staff and volunteers for their outstanding season, especially their exceptional success at the annual Sierra Band Crusade, and for representing themselves, Spanish Springs High School, the entire Sparks community, and the county of Washoe with such distinction through their talent, hard work, and determination. And witness thereof, I honor you, and I have this for you. You want to share a little bit about your experience?
Actually, I'd like to introduce the two gentlemen to my left. But first off, Dan Maron for the record, and I'm not here as your contracts and risk manager at the moment. I'm here as a seven-year band dad to this program. I'm also the coordinator for the Nevada Day Battle of the Bands, and have been since its inception five years ago, so I can speak to that event. First off, apologies from the director. Mr. David Morris is busy at the moment, still teaching, because the school day doesn't end for another 10 minutes, but we were lucky enough to get the two band captains to my left, DJ Latham and Bradley Burgett. The Cougar Marching Band that everybody knows is a combined. It's not just horns, it's horns, it's drums, it's the color guard unit, and it's a great program, obviously, for the education of the students, their own pride and performance, and the social network that it sets up for themselves. And I offer myself as a benefit of that, as a guy that measured his high school sweetheart who he met in marching band. Marching band, something else. The Nevada Day Battle of the Band, I want to touch on really quickly, because it is our fifth annual event. It's at Spanish Springs High School on October 27, which is the observed Nevada Day holiday. It's a Friday. The event starts at noon, and you're all, of course, cordially invited and welcome to come see what it's about. It's a large event in that we take up every parking lot at Spanish Springs High School with buses, equipment trucks, and students. We get about 800 performers there in the course of three hours. This year, we have eight bands plus Spanish Springs will be performing an exhibition, but we have all the regional marching bands in Reno, out as far as Fernley and Carson, coming to our campus to compete. And to give unity of competition, if you go to a high school football game, the guys that put on the nine-minute show at halftime, that's the show they're working all year long to perfect and to compete against other groups in the area. And you spoke to the Sierra Band Crusade in their class. This group has won first place the last several years. So we're very proud of that and happy to pass off to these guys, but they'd love to come up and take a picture with the mayor as well, once you're done with them.
You want to play an instrument?
I don't know what to say. This is cool. Marching band is fun. I've been in marching band all four years of high school. This is my senior year. Before that, I was in band since fourth grade, so this is like my ninth year playing trumpet now. And it's really fun. I believe it's made me who I am. And yeah.
I play French horn, but I play melophone during the marching season as well. I'm also a senior in high school, so this is seventh year. I've been playing since sixth grade. Honestly, marching band felt like a second family to me, because just about a year ago, I moved from Hoy. I came here, and then just able to fit right back into the groove of things. So, yeah, marching band has definitely changed me for the better.
What are you playing, sir?
French horn.
And then in the marching band?
Melophone.
Which is, what's a melophone?
I don't know if you can see it, but it's on my dog tag right here. Yeah, it's like very small, but.
Place a tune on your dog. So is it smaller than a suso?
Yes, very. It's bigger than a trumpet, though.
Well, see, when I was a kid, I had to play the suso, because I was only carrying the band, so I guess.
I'd like a picture of that, sir.
I can arrange that. Do a picture?
Do you want council or just the mayor?
Thanks, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Who's got 7-2? International Walk to School Day? Maybe I've got it. Go figure, I have it. Hi, MJ, how are you? Good to see you. Again, I'll read the proclamation again for, I think this is probably the 10th or 12th year, but... year, but... All right, let me read the proclamation, and then we'll put you on, dear. Whereas school travel by private family vehicle for students grades K through 12 accounted for 10 to 14 percent of the automobile trips made during the moving peak period in the past 2 to 3 percent of the local annual trips made by families and vehicles in the United States. And whereas reducing the number of vehicles driving students to school results in increased safety, reduced traffic congestion, improved air quality, and less fuel consumption in the vicinity of schools. And whereas the benefits related to physical activity and early age play a leading role in reducing rates of heart disease, diabetes, and other obesity-related health problems among children. And whereas children walking and bicycling to school together with parents and caregivers opens opportunities to mentor children about pedestrian and bicycle safety, and its benefits related to health and environment. And whereas walking and bicycling to school offers an opportunity to build physical activity into both parents' and children's daily routines. Now, therefore, I, Gino Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 11th, 2017, as International Walk to School Day in Sparks, and encourage citizens of Sparks, Nevada, to walk or bicycle with their children to school while celebrating the benefits of increased safety and health this day and throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I do have just a few words. It is with sorrow that I've chosen to go back to patrol with the school police, and the person taking over is Officer Roger Marcusson. He's going to do a great job as the Safe Routes to School Coordinator. He couldn't be here today to let me introduce him to the council, but he will be here for the next event. Safe Routes to School looks forward to this event every year. It's a time when we can get our students to learn about healthy and safe ways. It offers the prime opportunity for us to demonstrate where they can stay healthy and be safe when they're walking to school. Walking and bicycling to school is a great way to spend time outdoors, get some exercise, and reduce the vehicle traffic around the schools. We have a big thank you to Councilwoman Cheryl Bybee. She came during Safety Week of the Homeowners Vista. She spent some time up in the community, and she presented at the Safety Assembly for Bud Beasley, and the students continue to talk about how great it was that she was there for their Safety Week. I hope other schools and other communities can embrace something like that program in their own, in their own environment. It was a, it was a perfect example on how to get the whole community together. Teachers are also encouraged to incorporate health and safety into their lessons and their curriculums in an effort to maximize the campaign efforts that Safe Routes to School does. The International Walk to School Day activities help raise awareness for walking and bike safety skills, and it reminds motorists to be vigilant and watching for the children who are out and about in their neighborhood. Last year, I reported on my son having been hit in the crosswalk, and it brought up a bunch of emotions here with the council. And although the good news is he's absolutely fine, they were very superficial injuries. The bad news is we're in our eighth week of school, and we've had our sixth vehicle-versus-student accident already, which is unprecedented. It's triple what we have already at this time of year, and I just can't strain enough about how important it is to bring awareness and have the vehicles watch out for pedestrians. We're always looking for ways to caution motorists about critical need for caring, careful driving, not just in our school zones, but all over our community. The lives of our children really depend on us, and the Walk to School Day offers us a great opportunity to remind everyone to watch out for pedestrians and bicyclists when they're behind the wheel. So, I appreciate your support all these years, and I look forward to working with the council in different ways. Thank you.
Well, thank you for what you've done in the past years, and I know you're moving on, and we've got somebody new coming on, but they'll do just as good a job as you, I'm sure. You've done a great job, I know, in working with this particular program, so thank you very much for all you've done.
Can I get a photo with the council?
Sure.
I'll come to you. Thank you. Thank you, Lauren.
I appreciate you all the years of support, sir. I know you're hardworking.
The Committee to Aid Abused Women Day. Who has that?
I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, then I'll let you say a few words and introduce yourself, okay? Proclamation. Whereas the Committee to Aid Abused Women, also known as CAH, is a northern Nevada nonprofit organization providing free confidential services for people experiencing family violence. And whereas the Committee to Aid Abused Women was founded in 1977 in a one-bedroom apartment by a brave, forward-thinking woman, becoming the first domestic violence program in the state of Nevada. And whereas the Committee to Aid Abused Women has grown to northern Nevada's largest domestic violence program, providing shelter, transitional housing, and services to more than 10,000 survivors and their families each year, and 22,593 bed nights last year alone. And whereas CAH's services include a 24-hour emergency hotline, advocacy, and individualized case management, emergency shelter, transitional housing, protection order assistance, and support through domestic violence advocates. And whereas CAH continues to be progressive in collaborative partnerships, such as NOAA's Reno at CAH, to better serve our community and survivors by removing barriers for those who need to seek help. And whereas the Committee to Aid Abused Women is celebrating 40 years of providing services and support to victims of domestic violence. Now, therefore, Gino Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, does hereby proclaim September 28th, 2017, as a day, pardon, a day in honor of the Committee to Aid Abused Women, signed as 4th day of September, 2017.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Denise Joxheimer. I'm the executive director of the Committee to Aid Abused Women, and thank you, Mayor Martini and council members. We greatly appreciate this honor. It means a lot to our organization. As the proclamation reads, we serve more than 11,000 individuals pretty much every year for more than 22,000 bed nights in our three different residential facilities. So, the work is hard, but meaningful. We, today, for example, have just about 63 individuals living in our residential facilities with their children, that includes children, receiving safety planning, goal planning, subsidized rent, financial literacy training, household supports in terms of clothing and household items, and more. So, your support and the support from the entire community is really critical to the work that we do, and we look forward to celebrating 40 more years with you in the future. So, thank you once again.
First of all, I'd like to thank CAH. For the last twice-plus years, our agency has been protesting crimes of domestic violence, and I've seen CAH...
Oh, what you do for our victims of domestic violence is just outstanding, and you're one of the few truly community-oriented organizations that help protect the people in our community. So, I would like to say thank you as well.
Presentation project, whoops, Fire Prevention Week. Mr. King. You've never done this before, have you? Are you ready? It's probably pretty much the same as last year. Proclamation. Whereas the City of Sparks is committed to ensuring the safety and security of those living and visiting our community. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas U.S. Fire Departments respond to 365 500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Prevention Association. And whereas U.S. Fire, U.S. home fires relate, resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority, 78 percent of all U.S. fire deaths. And whereas fire responders of the City of Sparks are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts," plans "Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan, and with all members of the household, and practicing it twice a year. Now, therefore, I, Gino Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout this city, and I urge all people of the City of Sparks to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Sparks Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2017. Thanks, Bob. Go ahead, Bob.
That's all I have. Better than that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, for the proclamation. We really appreciate it. It's something that we take, take to heart for the community as fire and life safety. First, what I'd like to do is do an introduction or reintroduction, for some of you, of my staff. Most of them are here today, so they can just raise their hand when I say their name. It's Dana Finacora. She's our administrative secretary. Chris McCubbins, our assistant fire marshal. Chris Van Ness, fire inspector. Don Parsons, fire inspector, and Frank Marvitz, our fire plan examiner. So, now you can see them by face, too, and that's always a good thing, so. Just real quick, a little history of Fire Prevention Week. NFPA has been an official sponsor of Fire Prevention Week since 1922, so this has been going on for quite some time. President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed the first national fire prevention week on October 4th through 10th in 1925, beginning a tradition of the President of the United States signing a proclamation recognizing this occasion. It is observed on the Sunday through the Saturday period in which October 9th falls in commemoration of the great Chicago Fire, which began October 8th, 1871, and did most of its damage on October 9th. The horrific conflagration killed more than 250 people, left 100,000 homeless, destroyed more than 17,400 structures, and burned more than 2,000 acres. So, it is really important for us to continue the efforts of fire and life safety and fire prevention for our community as a result of that, that happened that long ago. This year's theme is "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," and that falls right in line with our current Project SAFE Smoke Alarm Education and Installation Program, which I'll talk just a little bit about at my next presentation. We're also doing a Home Depot Fire Safety Day at the Home Depot in Spanish Springs. We're partnering with them on October 7th. It'll be from 8:00 a.m. till noon, and they have a whole bunch of activities that go on for the community there. They market it pretty big as their Fire Safety Day, and they've asked us to partner with them, and luckily, it's right in the same timeline as Fire Prevention Week. So, we'll have a fire safety trailer out there and a whole bunch of different activities for the public. And then, of course, if we can turn on this here, we have our annual pancake breakfast, which we always like to market, and it's to help educate the public about fire prevention and the theme this year. And we're also going to be educating the public about the do's and don'ts of reporting emergencies during that day, too. We'd like to invite you and the public out. It's our 28th Annual Pancake Breakfast, and it's on October 14th from 8:00 a.m. till noon. We have many, many different types of events going on at the firehouse on that day, from tours, static events, car extracations, our fire safety trailer, Sparky the Fire Dog, a whole bunch of stuff. And we have not raised our prices in over 20 years for this, in fact, probably 28 years. So, still $5 per person, except for seniors and children, it's $2 for them. Okay, so we'd like to invite everyone out for that. It'll be a fun day. Parking is really limited, though. We have a shuttle that is sponsored by the Nugget Casino Resort this year, and people can catch a shuttle at the west parking lot and just take the shuttle into the fire department, catch it to go back to their car after that. And if anyone is really a sports buff and likes to get a little exercise prior to the pancake breakfast, they're invited to our third annual First Alarm 5K Walk Run. And there's, that'll be right, right before. It's at 6:30 in the morning. You can check in over in the west parking lot there. The participation does include giving pancakes afterwards, so that's always a good thing. Okay? And that was it for the proclamation. I thank you again.
Project SAFE Golf fundraiser results and plaque presentations. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you again very much. Bob King, fire marshal for record. Project SAFE, as I mentioned, I had mentioned just a little bit about it. It started back in 2006 as an educational program. It transformed into a multifaceted fire safety, education, and installation program for our community, for all the older homes in our community. Results to date, three documented smoke alarm saves, two documented carbon monoxide saves so far. So, that's, that we know about, that people have actually reported to us. So, that's really a plus for our program to show that the ones that we installed, they did actually help save people in emergency. We have installed over 3,500 smoke alarms in 1,171 homes, 785 carbon monoxide detectors, 64 hearing impaired devices, educated well over 2,500 adults and children with this program. And then, we added an additional program, which you may remember called Remembering When Fire and Fall Safety for Older Adults. We added that a year ago as well, and we're taking that forward with it, too. So, any Sparks homes that are built prior to 1994 are the homes that we want to go out and install smoke alarms in, because they're the ones that usually only have one smoke alarm in their house. So, we like to install them as nationally. Statistically, it says you should have one in every bedroom and one outside in the hallway as well. So, we'll install them all for free, and then we'll do education, walk people through their homes, and have a good time with them as well. So, funding for this program came way back when we did, had some FEMA funding, and then we, we weren't able to get FEMA funding anymore, so we tried to figure out another way to get funding for this, and that's what takes us to what we're talking about today, is we have conducted eight Project SAFE Golf fundraisers now to help continue bringing in the money for this program, and it's worked out really well. The max attendance each year is between 120 to 144 players for that. And what's most importantly about this, this isn't just any golf fundraiser that you would see out there. They, every player truly learns a little bit about fire prevention when they're there, because we even, we even have a hole that when they get up there as a foursome, they have to answer two or three questions on fire... answer two or three questions on fire safety before they can move on, and then if they answer them, they get an advantage on the hole. So it's, they, truly, we can say, out of those 144 players, we've educated every one of them in fire safety at a golf fundraiser. That's, that's pretty neat. The proceeds from the golf fundraiser are used in many ways. We want to make sure everyone knows that we continue to purchase smoke alarms, CO detectors, hearing impaired devices, fire prevention educational paraphernalia, tools and equipment of, for what we do. We maintain our fire safety trailer and all of our other props. We buy educational material. We buy material that we need for Remembering When program now. And then any other public fire safety education event we do in the community, that's what those funds are, are going towards. So it truly is going back to the community. So for today, I really wanted to give some recognition to our top sponsors. Of course, donations, you know, donations and sponsorships are huge for a golf fundraiser in order to make it successful for proceeds, and we always seem to have some really top sponsors that come in and help us out. Today I have four top sponsors that I have plaques for. I, I tell them that I like to recognize them at a council meeting, and I'd like to do that now if I could. Okay, our, the first one is a premier sponsor since 2010. It's ABC Fire and Cylinder Services. Let's see if Nick Brown or anyone else from ABC is here today. I didn't see him in the crowd earlier. Okay, so we'll make sure that, that, that they get that. I'll, I'll present it to them at their office then. And then our premier sponsor since 2012 is Belfour Property Restoration, and I do know Chris Nelson is here today to accept that plaque. And we have premier sponsor since 2014 is Coit of Reno, and it's Lonnie Fixel. He's the owner of Coit. And then our last one, I'm not sure if I saw anyone in the audience here, our title and lunch sponsor for, since 2017, so new to us this year, is a Nugget Casino Resort. Very good. Very happy to have, very happy to have you on board. And that was it. Thank you very much to Mr. Mayor and members of the council for allowing me to come in and, and do the recognition to our top sponsors.
Questions for Bob? Go ahead, Chris.
I'd like to say just thank you, and on behalf of all of us, fire prevention is, is much better than the other side of the whole thing of actually having a fire. So all that, I think the biggest question is how can we continue to make sure, if it's just golf, golf tournaments and whatnot, or how can we continue to make sure that we're getting this word out there the best we can?
We do it through our marketing, especially through the, the Project SAFE program. We'll continue marketing this out in the community. Out there, and they can call for it at any time at our office, and, and we'll schedule it for them.
Next is a presentation, 7.6 Arts and Economic Prosperity Survey, National Nevada and City of Reno.
Hello, my name is Alexis Hill from the City of Reno Arts and Culture Department.
Hi, I'm Shoshana Zeldner from the Nevada Arts Council.
Thank you very much for having us today. We're excited to talk about the Economic Impact Survey results for the state of Nevada and the City of Reno, oh, for the, that have been done for the first time, especially in conjunction with the Cultural Master Plan that Francine Burge from the City of Sparks will be presenting to the mayor and council today. And, do you want to give a little background?
Yeah. So the study that we're presenting is a national study. There were over 300 different official study partners. The City of Reno and the State of Nevada through the Nevada Arts Council were both official study partners, and it's the largest study of its kind, so it's assessing the economic impact of the nonprofit arts and culture industry. So this is only nonprofit, which is really exciting because it allows us to measure the return on investment for public funding. Cool. So this is actually not from the study, but just to give you a sense of the larger for-profit nonprofit arts and cultural industry, the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis found that the arts and culture make up about 4.2% of the nation's GDP. So that's a huge, huge impact.
So although there are many different smaller organizations, together they actually are bigger than the construction and transportation mining industries. So nationwide, there is 166.3 billion spent in 2015 in the nonprofit arts and cultural, by audience spending. We want to really cut to locally and why these numbers are so important to our community.
Okay.
Cool.
So, what are the different organizations participated in this study? So where we got our data was from two different places, an organizational survey that nonprofit organizations did that looked at their expenses and revenues, and then from audience surveys, surveying people who went to arts and cultural events and asking them how much they spent in relation to that event above and beyond the ticket price. So we found that there are actually about 600 nonprofit arts and cultural organizations, but I just want you to keep in mind that these numbers are only from about 28% of those organizations. So there weren't any estimates made. This is a really conservative number, so we can know that the impact is actually significantly larger. So overall, $471.7 million were spent in Nevada for nonprofit arts and culture, and then 230 by the organizations, and 245 from audience members.
And in Reno, 89 million spent in arts and culture spending, 50 million by organizations and 39 million by audiences. This is more than double the national average for a city of Reno's size. So it's very interesting to see that we have very many arts and cultural organizations in the City of Reno. And to go back to the number of organizations in Reno, we had 47 organizations and 92 eligible nonprofits, so we had a 51% return. And then we had 780 valid audience. There are no estimates have been made on those, again, to clarify.
So again, you can see the impact on, these are full-time jobs that the arts and cultural industry is generating here in Nevada. So about 10,500 jobs are generated, and you can see almost 20, or 2,600 of them are in the City of Reno.
And I put up a map at the end of the, I gave out today, that at the top of the list in Washington County, Washington County schools being number one, University of Nevada being number two, the creative industries, which is our art nonprofit, that have different people that work in the creative industries, would make up the third largest industry in Washington County. So I think there's 2,000, 358 jobs that kind of put that number into perspective, even though there's not one, a way to understand those numbers a little bit better.
This is really, so from all of the spending that happens, $36.8 million is generated for local government across Nevada. So that's huge. And at the Nevada Arts Council, we grant about $1 million in grants to organizations and artists. So that's tiny. And just for us to be able to put that million dollars out there and see the impact that we're having, it's, you know, not that we're funding every single organization, but we're funding a large number of them. So that 36.8 million, or the return on investment from something very small, becomes really large and has a big impact in the local community.
And for the City of Reno, it's $8 million. That is a local, a really local government revenue. The City of Reno gets $200,000 in grants to nonprofit arts organizations. So that's what we are, we're able to tout, and we're really excited to have that number.
I surveyed attendees for arts and cultural events, asking them what they spent in relation to the event, like meals, parking, babysitter, anything else they might have bought at the event. So we found the average is about $28.90 per person, per event, above and beyond the ticket price. And in the City of Reno, it's $29.78. And then, most were locals that we were surveying, so 91.3%, 8.7% were visitors.
And Reno, local, non-local, non-local, 17.9%, local 82.1%. And this is more than, significantly more than the locals, almost $80, which is huge. And another, 36.4% of the dollars were spent in arts and culture, primary purpose for arts. So these audiences are looking for experiences which arts and culture organizations bring for communities, as well as bringing right to the local.
So another big point is just how important volunteerism is for the nonprofit arts and cultural industry. So from our surveys, we found that there were 11,000 volunteers working at these organizations who put in over 58,000 hours, which is equivalent to $13,700,000, which is significant.
And the City of Reno, there was 3,344 volunteers equalling five, of investment in volunteerism hours. And we put together a statement about what it means, business info, you can have it at hand if people ask, I hope that this will be a tool, and we hope that the City of Sparks will participate in the survey and find it, so we can have specific members for the future.
This is our last slide. Yeah, I really hope the City of Sparks will participate. I think you can see by the return of the numbers in general, how many more surveys and organizational surveys we had from the City of Reno. So I'm hoping we can get Vegas, Henderson, Sparks onboard next year. It's really great data. Thank you for having us.
And please let us know if you have any questions.
Let's move on to 7.7, which is a presentation from EDON, EDON Expansion and Workforce.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, and thank you for the opportunity to make this brief presentation today. For the Vice President of the Department, Senior Vice President, Retention, Expansion, and Workforce Development for EDON, Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada. During EDON, I made my first 2012, actually when I retired from AT&amp;T as a Regional Vice President of Sales, I came onboard about six months after Mike Kozmiewski, our CEO, joined EDON. I know that much of what you hear about EDON is the business development and things, so it's great to have this opportunity to speak with you not only about EDON, but about our store as our CEO, calling on the Business Retention, Expansion, Workforce Development. You can also see from this slide that we need to write activities in the region that include and impact the City of Sparks. And a couple of key ones from this slide would be certainly the Washington District One passing of that funding proposal, the Economic Planning Educator Committee Report, which really pulled together a lot of resources to forecast overall growth in the region, and then the work that we're doing to encourage the building of housing in order to have adequate workforce housing and overall for the community as we continue to grow. Before going to the actual, I just highlighted online resources that we are providing in the city and in the region, and I've passed out some blinders that have some of these in them. I've given you a work copy of our workforce resource guide, also an activity book on my future, and Washington County School District, third and fourth graders, to help them and their parents think about the many opportunities and different types of careers and skills that are available in the community. Our online toolkit includes information about things like transportation, background checks, and our primary company list. A primary company list is a compilation of all of the companies that I and my team have visited over the past five years. It has over 500 companies listed with an explanation of who they are, what they are, and what they do. And it's used by individual brand companies, both within and outside the region. And then, of course, we also include Sparks companies in our existing industry award, which is coming up on October 24th. And this is really to make sure that we are recognizing existing companies, as well as all of the new companies coming to the region. My team consists of three people, myself, and my administrative assistant, as well as our program manager for workforce development. So all we got is companies, we basically want you to know them, so we understand who they are, what they do. We want to identify any issues that they may have. We want to connect them with resources that they may not be aware of, and we want to certainly help them find, contact workforce resources and, and retain their existing workforce. So we do a lot of things depending on what the needs are of the specific business that we are visiting. One example that I brought up, just to give you an idea, is ITAS Logistics. I first met with them in 2013 to first make the introduction and understand who they were and what they do. We also visited them twice in 2015, where we talked about the workforce, did a deep dive visit to understand their current and future workforce needs, visited them again to talk specifically about CDL drivers and whether there's a way to set up some sort of apprenticeship program for that. They pay our council supply chain management professionals. We have a number of industry councils that we lead up, and of course, they have participated in our existing industry awards. They won the Corporate Citizen Award in 2016, Company of the Year Large in 2013, and Significant Expansion also in 2013. So that's just an example of the kinds of things that will come up when we are talking with our companies. So in 2016, because of the success of the company and supporting the growth of existing companies, we wanted to go ahead and a little bit more focus really on the workforce development plan. So we created our community workforce plan, which is based on the foundation you see on this slide, which has multiple tactics and strategies built into each target area. So the retention is to help companies understand the importance of retention of their employees, provide them with wage data and other information that they may need to help keep the employees that they have. The connection is on multiple levels with resources, also connecting the workforce resources with each other. The training is to make sure that the training that exists in the community matches up to the needs of the existing and expanding businesses that are growing in the region. And then the last part is attraction, and this is actually attraction of workforce, to make sure we have the workforce that we need in order to meet the needs of these companies that are here and also the companies that are growing. So our work, our activities are the general activities. We fully the workforce consortium, a group of service providers and government representatives. We also work to connect with high school equivalency programs, K through 12, college and the university. And the attraction of workers may not be something that you know that much about. I see I have plenty of society women and juniors up here. You also have in your folder all of our workforce initiatives, sort of a folio of different initiatives that we pursued in the, in the last fiscal year, many of which are attractive. initiatives that we pursued in the last fiscal year, many of which are attraction of actual employees. We've got billboards, we've got Craigslist campaigns, and a variety of other things. And so we also provide support for hiring, connecting them with people like Job Connect and so forth, where they can make sure that they're able to find the workforce that they need. On workforce development projects, we also have a number of projects that certainly impact the city of Sparks. The Washington County School District Tours, we have brought out over 400 individual educators from Washington County School District throughout all the different schools to actually visit with companies, including companies in Sparks, such as Now Foods, such as Via City, to actually get an idea of what these companies do, who they are, and what types of jobs and positions they have, and what kinds of skills, skilled resources that they need. As I mentioned, we have the sector councils. I've included the copy of the Workforce Resource Guide. We have educational forums. This one that I've noted on this slide is the Learn and Earn Career Pathways, and that is matching up the actual programs within multiple levels of the education system with the needs of the employers. So we're bringing in the employers in Sparks and the rest of the community to give direct feedback, to make sure that the curriculum is matching up to what they need. We are providing companies to job seekers. And I get a lot of inquiries from job seekers that are moving to the region about where they can find a job, certainly promote companies. We're actually, Sierra Nevada Corporation is probably joining us on our trip to the Society of Women Engineers coming up, and we'll be talking to students that come up. We promote apprenticeships across the Washington County School District, including the manufacturing technician programs at Sparks High School, and we encourage our apprenticeship participation across the board. So specific to Sparks, 36 visits to Sparks companies made by myself and my team within this last year. I'm happy to report there were no critical issues in this fiscal year that were brought up to the team by companies in Sparks. We had four Spark companies that we made business-to-business connections for others, and then we had four business-to-business connections that were made to Spark companies where they were out of the region, but we referred them to a company in Sparks to purchase or procure a service or support or product from a Sparks company. We have eight Sparks in our existing industry awards in 2016 and had three winners. And then I did help with the ITS expansion in March of 2016, which created 55 jobs and was a multimillion dollar capital investment. So we're doing a variety of things across the board. And now, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. Thank you for very much the support. I'm very much looking forward to continuing to support the great companies in Sparks and the new ones that are coming to Sparks as well.
Next, we have 7.8, Regional Plan. How long is your presentation, Kim?
Approximately three minutes.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I believe we have a presentation. It's on the desktop. Thank you, sorry. In the meantime, as most of you know, I'm Kim Robinson. I'm with the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. And I'm here today to talk to you, give you an update, actually, I guess chat with you a little bit about our update in terms of our 2017 regional plan update. Sorry, I'm getting distracted by trying to turn this on. Here we go. So what we'd like to start with today is we've created a video that actually talks a little bit about our agency, and we're taking it out to the various groups that we're talking to, and I'd like to play that for you today. Should, potentially, I will tell you this, it's worked in some places and not others.
TMRPA is the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, responsible for coordinating planning across Reno, Sparks, and Washington County. TMRPA is made up of the Regional Planning Governing Board, the Regional Planning Commission, and agency staff. By promoting collaboration and addressing growth, the agency ensures efficient use of resources. To accomplish this, TMRPA develops and maintains the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. The regional plan is built upon the agency's various technical analyses. For example, the consensus forecast, which is a 20-year look at population and employment growth. Here, the locations of population growth are shown in red, and employment growth in yellow. In order to do this forecast, TMRPA tracks potential development. This file represents areas mapped for each of development. This allows for a comprehensive look at planned growth. Understanding development potential helps us to imagine different futures for our region, called scenarios. Here, you can see a simulation of possible future development on currently vacant lots in Midtown and Downtown Reno. Scenarios allow us to assess potential impacts and make informed decisions about growth. Visit plantruckiemeads.org to get involved.
Okay.
Very nice. And then you're rushing to volunteer.
So as mentioned in the video, we respond to foster coordination around the use of land, excuse me, and regional issues of coordination, such as water, air quality, and roads. We do this across Washington County with an emphasis in the more populated areas. TMRPA develops and maintains a plan that coordinates growth across our region, and it has a 20-year horizon. So a question I get asked a lot is why should we plan regionally? And the answer is because growth knows no boundaries. You may live in Sparks, work in Reno, and play in Washington County, but the need for resources such as roads, water, and schools transcends jurisdictional lines. Who do we coordinate with? Something else we get asked a lot, too. And everybody up here, every agency up here, we've done some type of work with. Our data analysis have been used by a variety of groups, including EDON and the Western Regional Water Commission. And in fact, since 2012, we have completed 40 collaborative projects and leveraged over $1 million from our regional partners, maximizing that investment of government dollars. So why I'm here today is because we've recently launched the public participation phase of the 2017 regional plan update. It's a five-year update, and our community has changed a lot in the past five years. I don't think I need to tell any of us that, right? Whether it's economy, demographics, or land uses, we've seen a lot of changes, and we expect more. We want to be prepared. Since the regional plan addresses topics such as population, conservation, and infrastructure, this is the perfect opportunity for folks to engage and get involved. And that's what we're asking for here today. We have our first survey up at plantruckiemeads.org. It's a community survey about growth. We're asking for folks to go to this website, take the survey, sign up for our newsletters, share it on your social media. We're looking forward to getting more responses. I can say that we launched on August 24, and we've had quite good success. So please share, and I'd like to say thank you for your time. I'm available for any questions.
Kim, thank you for being here today. The regional plan update is really important, especially for this region, given the growth that we're experiencing, the changes that are happening in our whole region, not just in Sparks, but the whole region. I would encourage everyone to take that survey. I don't know if I'm going to put my counterparts on the hot seat to see if they've taken it, but I'm hoping the whole council, all of you out there, and people who are working as community members, take this survey as fast. You know, I mean, five minutes max, three to five minutes to take this survey. And there'll be a series of surveys, but if you really want to know what this region's going to look like, you have to have your voice heard. So I would encourage you all to please go online, plantruckiemeads.org, and fill out the survey. Thanks for being here.
Thanks, Kim. Okay. So are we? Do we have the people we need, or?
Do you want to try and get ahold of Garrett real fast, we'll move on to the next item?
Yeah, let's. So in the audience, we'd like to move items 11-1 and 11-2 up to be heard right now, as there's some obligations that need to be met by some of the principles of this. You guys got everybody you need, Garrett?
Yes, sir.
The council, I have a problem with. Okay, we're going to hear 11-1, 11-2. You're going to do those together, and then we'll vote separately. Armando?
I'll do them. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, members of the City Council. I am Armando Ornelas, the Assistant Community Services Director, and I am filling in this afternoon for Development Services Manager Karen Melby. This agenda item, Bill Number 2724, is an ordinance providing for voluntary annexation into the city of Sparks of two parcels totaling 3.47 acres in size located at 3650 Weddington Road. So you can see, outlined in the red, is the parcel. Weddington is to the north, on the north boundary of the parcel, and it is surrounded on two sides by the city of Sparks. On June 15, 2017, the Sparks Planning Commission voted to forward a recommendation of denial to the City Council of this annexation request due to the negative fiscal impact to the city arising from the potential annexation that would be triggered by development of this property of Weddington Road between Sullivan Lane and El Rancho Road. Staff concurs with the recommendation of denial. However, the city has received a letter from Garrett Gordon, who is representing the applicant. Mr. Gordon is proposing an alternative primary access to the property, which could potentially eliminate the trigger requiring the city of Sparks to annex portions of Weddington Road, and therefore substantially affect the fiscal analysis for this project. This is important new information which materially affects this annexation request and, by extension, the fiscal impact analysis. So the thought here is that there is a church property to the southwest of the site that would grant an easement for this property, and so that would move potentially the primary access off of Weddington and to the south. So given that this is important new information, staff is recommending, and I think in his letter, Mr. Garrett concurs with this, that the case be remanded back to the Planning Commission so that we can consider the access, the alternative access, as well as what the implications are in terms of the fiscal analysis. I am prepared to do a full presentation on the item if the council wants to consider either approving or denying it, but if you wish to remand the case back to the Planning Commission, then I would recommend that you make that motion now. The rezoning request is tied to this. The city cannot rezone what it has annexed, and so if you don't act on the annexation, then you can't consider the rezoning request.
Let me understand, Armando, if we elect to remand it back, we can hear, do a public hearing on 11-1 and do what we have to do, but we still have to have a public hearing on 11-2, even though it is not done because it's agendized? Is that right, Chad?
I know, it's always been your position in the past. I think no matter what, if you move 11.2, if you decide to remand 11.1 and 11.2, I have a hearing on the matter if you want without that jurisdiction to.
Well, as an abundance of caution, I'd probably like to hear it anyway.
That's certainly the chair's discretion, sir. You're free to do that.
Fine, if you want to hear it, we'll hear it, but I was going to say we're going to hear it again anyways after it goes back to Planning Commission.
I agree, but it's been agendized, and there's people here that maybe wanted to speak on it. So we have no issues and nothing down the road if we let everybody have their say. It's not going to take that long, I don't believe.
We completed your presentation, Armando. I completed my initial presentation up to the point where I was suggesting that if you were going to remand, that no further presentation would be necessary in my part. If you do want the full presentation, then I will go into the findings and the reasons why various findings can or cannot be made.
As to the public hearing, you still have to have a public hearing.
You still have to have the public hearing.
Excuse me, ask for questions, close it, and then remand it, or then vote on a remand to the... Okay. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone who want to speak, anyone in the public want to speak to 11.1? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Do we have any kind of suggestions or motions, Mr. Lawson?
I'd like to make a motion to remand 11.1 back to the Planning Commission to consider the new easement that has been presented.
Mr. Garrett?
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Garrett to remand 11.1 back to the Planning Commission for review. Any other questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, so that will be remanded back to Planning Commission. Now, just for giggles, we'll open the public hearing on 11.2. Anyone want to speak to 11.2? Seeing none, we'll close 11.2 and bring it back to the council, which needs no action on this particular item. Is that correct? Okay, so we're done, right? Okay, you guys are done. Thanks.
painless. Thank you, guys. Thanks for working with us, too.
Okay, let's move back to... Back to consent items. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We did the regional plan. Okay. Consent items 8.1 through 8.3. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Ron Smith?
Moved to approve consent items 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3.
Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Lawson. General Business 9.1, presentation discussion and possible approval of the 2017-18 dues for the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Wes Henderson. I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director of the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities. And the first thing I want to do, of course, is thank the city of Sparks for their membership and participation in the league. We're your league, but we get our strength from our members, so we appreciate your participation. You all should have received earlier this year a copy of our legislative report. I do want to talk briefly about a couple of things that happened during the session, but if you didn't get a copy of the report, please let me know, and we'll make sure that you get one. As you know, the league is authorized to submit five BDRs each legislative session. This year, we submitted four, and we were successful in getting one of those passed. The bill that we got passed was Assembly Bill 8. This expands the existing authority that cities had to place delinquent sewer bills on the property tax rolls for collection. As of October 1, you could now place delinquent water bills or storm drain bills on property tax rolls for collection as well. Obviously, this is a collection method of last resort, but we felt it was a tool that you should have. Some of the other bills that I'd like to touch on is Assembly Bill 417. This bill creates the Nevada Main Street Program. As you recall, in 2015, the league had a bill to create this program. We were unsuccessful, but Assemblywoman Swank brought it back, found the money to fund the position, and got it passed. And Main Street is a great program. It's good for economic development, it's good for tourism, and it's good for quality of life and your economy. Senate Bill 176 was passed. This bill requires that no later than July 1 of 2018, all uniform law enforcement personnel that deal with the public on a regular basis wear body cameras. There was a funding provision in the bill that allowed the county commission to increase the 911 fee and use some of that money to help pay for body cameras and the stories devices. Unfortunately, it was left at the county commission level, so hopefully Washington County will step up and do the right thing. will step up and do the right thing. There was a companion bill, Senate Bill 88, that would have created an avenue for a law enforcement agency to go to the interim finance committee for a grant. That bill passed out of the Senate 21 to 0, went to the Assembly, was referred to Ways and Means Committee, and never got a hearing. So, that did not pass. We wished it had. There are several workplace accommodation bills that were passed this session. Assembly Bill 113 requires that all public employees, employers, excuse me, and private employers with 50 or more employees provide a clean private area for a woman to express breast milk during the workday. Assembly Bill 241 requires that cities include a provision in their building codes, or if you don't have a building code, adopt an ordinance that requires that all public buildings or facilities that are constructed after October 1st of this year have changing tables in the restrooms. There are some exceptions, such as if it's an age-restricted business, such as a bar, you don't have to have a changing table in the bathroom, and hopefully there won't be babies in the bar, anyway. And then finally, Senate Bill 253, the bill established the Nevada Pregnant Workers Fairness Act to provide protections to female employers and applicants for employment who are affected by a condition of pregnancy or childbirth. There was a couple of districts that were created that I want, or that were authorized during this last session. Assembly Bill 246 revises provisions related to the creation of local improvement districts that will allow two or more contiguous municipalities to enter into an interlocal agreement for the creation, operation of an improvement district. And then Assembly Bill 379 authorizes local governments to create a parks, trails, and open space district. And then the main subject of this legislative session seemed to be marijuana. And I spent probably 70% of my time on marijuana-related issues, and just want to touch on a few of those real quick. Assembly Bill 135, the main thing this bill does, it says you can no longer use the presence of marijuana or marijuana metabolized in urine as proof of intoxication when you're operating a vehicle. That now has to be proven through a blood test. Assembly Bill 422, this bill, I kind of refer to it as the Keep Pot Away From Kids bill. It says that one thing, that it transfers responsibility for the regulation from the Division of Public and Behavioral Health to the Department of Taxation. It made changes to registry identification cards for medical patients. Now, they reduced the cost from $100 to $50, and the cards can now be good for up to two years on the recommendation of a doctor. The bill also prohibits use of vending machines to sell marijuana, which I didn't know they had. But the important part of this bill to this City Council and all the City Councils are there are some restrictions that were placed into this bill and also in a couple of other bills that limits your ability to regulate and license marijuana businesses. The main things it did is it capped the business license fee that you can charge marijuana businesses to 3% of their gross revenue. We testified against that provision several times, saying it's not the state legislator's job to tell cities what they can charge for business license fees, and that this should not be considered precedent-setting. We had the sponsor of one of the bills, I think you guys may know her, Senator Ratty, who came up after we had testified and put on the record that that was not the intention of this bill, was to be considered a precedent, but because the marijuana industry is unique, that's why they felt the 3% cap was important. We also, the bill also provides that the incorporated city may impose any fees required pursuant to NRS 278, which is the business license chapter. You can also charge an origination or application fee, similar to those fees that you charge alcohol businesses under NRS 369. And you can also require an ancillary, or a separate business license for ancillary businesses at a marijuana establishment, such as if a retail store or dispensary is selling t-shirts or something like that, that's not covered by their license for the marijuana establishment, so you can require them to have a second business license for that. There are also restrictions that were put on local governments, that you cannot adopt any ordinance that is more restrictive than state law or regulations regarding the packaging, labeling, testing, dosage, or potency of marijuana and marijuana products, the kinds of edible marijuana products, marijuana products and marijuana-infused products that may be sold, the use of pesticide and the cultivation of marijuana, and the tracking of marijuana from seed to sale, and the transportation of marijuana and marijuana products other than the direct transportation to the consumer. However, you can require a marijuana distributor to notify the city anytime marijuana is being transported within your city limits. And it also contained language that provides that a person obtained a business license from the state is subject to all other licensing and permitting requirements of the state and any other counties and cities in which the person does business. That was important to get that in statute, to just reassert that local governments do have the authority and the right to regulate and license marijuana businesses. Senate Bill 344, this is actually the Keep Pot Out of Kids bill. This bill said that it prohibits the production of products that resemble lollipops or other items that may appeal to children. You can't use cartoon characters on advertising, and it requires marijuana dispensaries and retail stores to offer for sale a child-resistant container. So if an adult goes in and purchases marijuana, they can buy a container to make it more difficult for children to get to the product. And then finally, Senate Bill 487, this bill made various changes, it changed the tax structure on medical marijuana. Medical marijuana was being taxed 2% at cultivation, 2% at production, 2% at retail. This bill changed that to align it with the tax structure that was contained in question two, so now all marijuana is taxed 15% at the cultivation level. What this does, it allows the industry to not have to make a determination, once a plant is viable, if it is a recreational plant or a medical plant, and track them separately through the system. Now, they can all be tracked the same, the only distinction is made at the point of sale. The bill also provides that of the 15% excise tax imposed on the cultivation, it deems $10 million for the next biennium as sufficient to cover the cost of all local governments in the state. You know, we obviously were opposed to that. We don't know what the costs are going to be, but that is in the bill and is law. How that money is going to be distributed is still not been determined, and we'll be talking about that more in the coming weeks and months. The bill also imposed a 10% excise tax on the retail sale of recreational marijuana. That money goes into the State Training Day Fund. Local governments not get any of that. And it also provided an avenue for smaller cities and counties under 100,000 that don't have a medical dispensary to get one. One thing I didn't mention, of the 650 bills passed by the legislature, the governor vetoed over, I think, 41 of them. We're very thankful that he vetoed some. If you remember back in 2015, there was legislation that made modest reforms to collective bargaining and the prevailing wage statutes, prevailing wages that raised a trigger, which was established in 1985, from $100,000 to $250,000, and the collective bargaining in the Evergreen Clause, which means a contract lived on forever regardless. Both of those reforms were rolled back by the legislature to where they were prior to the bill's passing in 2015. The governor vetoed both of those bills, so everything stayed the way it was. Then a couple of quick updates on some league items. Our conference is coming up very, very soon. It's October 10th and 12th in Mesquite. I know several of you are coming down, and we're looking forward to seeing you there. We are fine-tuning the program. I mean, most of it's done, but we're fine-tuning it. I think we're going to have some really good educational sessions. Our keynote speaker for our opening general session is a gentleman who is a three-time cancer survivor. He had to teach himself how to walk again, and since that time, he has completed a marathon on all seven continents. So I'm really interested in hearing his story. The general sessions and the educational sessions, to me, are the meat and potatoes of the conference, but I think just as important are the social events, where you get to interact in a relaxed attitude or more relaxed environment with your colleagues from across the state and get to know each other, talk to each other, and, you know, you may have a concern up here that somebody else has already had and resolved, so we certainly hope you can make that. And the National League of Cities Summit this year is in Charlotte, North Carolina, November 15th to 18th, and I encourage you to attend that if you can, because then you can do the same thing with your colleagues from across the country, and they're very, very informative. I did see, I don't understand this, because next year's conference is in Los Angeles, okay? One of the keynote speakers in North Carolina is going to be Magic Johnson, so I'm just wondering if next year in Los Angeles is going to be Michael Jordan. I mean, I don't know. So that is, that's my presentation, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. However, I do have one additional thing I need to do before I take questions. Last year in our conference here, Mayor Martini was named our Public Official of the Year, which is the highest award the league gives out. I had to take the trophy back out of his office today so that I can take it down to Mesquite and give it to this year's honoree, but I do have a plaque for you, which, you know, realizes that you are the 2016 Public Official of the Year.
Sorry. Thanks, Wes. Well, thanks to Wes and the other officials at the League of City. This is really unbelievable. Yeah.
You're more than welcome. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Are here to...
Yeah, I'm interested in this part, too.
Dues payable. Any questions about the dues? Charlie?
I'm just ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
If there's no questions. I move to approve the 2017-18 Dues for the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities in the amount of $20,418,062.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
The move by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Smith. There's a question? Seeing none, please vote.
Passage unanimously. For me, Wes, thank you so much. It's been much better with the league since you've joined the organization. We've gotten a lot more done, a lot more to be done that's coming, I'm sure. So we really appreciate it, especially through the legislature. There's, I shouldn't say "there," I'm sorry. It's "it," the legislature itself, the whole process is kind of a pain. It's tough to get around and talk to people and everything, so thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And like I said earlier, we derive our strength from our members, so we appreciate your active participation.
Okay, 9.2, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of the Funding Allocation of $15,000 to Supplement the Nuggets, Rib Cook-Off, and Hot August Nights for Additional Police Costs. Go ahead.
All right. Francine Burge, City of Sparks Special Event Supervisor. Thank you. We received two requests from Hot August Nights and Rib Cook-Off to help offset some additional costs in police and SWAT costs. So we met, the Tourism and Marketing Committee met early August to disburse $7,500 each, which takes our numbers down to zero for that fund for this year, and that's it.
Any questions?
Justified, no problem. Oh, I'm sorry. Justified, no problems. Ron?
You know, we come back to the Tour Mark Committee, and we voted on that, and unfortunately, the state of the world today requires more police coverage, and I think our police firm covered all the events very well. We didn't have any problems, but I thought it was justified, so that's why it was approved. So unfortunately, that's the world we live in.
We found a few extra dollars in there, too.
Great.
Good, Chris.
Is that something that, is it because we mandated, we actually were saying we needed more people down there, or is it something they requested more people?
No, we mandate what the coverage should be. It comes from the police department.
Up beyond what they had budgeted originally?
Actually, pretty comforting to look around and see the police everywhere.
Brian Allen, you're Sparks Police Chief. For the record, what can I answer for you, sir?
I just wondered, so just for the record, in the sense of other events or other whatever, we had originally came out and said this is originally what they had budgeted, and so because of different things we've been through, we changed our procedural of what we're asking them, or just stayed the same?
Yeah, over the course of the years, we kind of have figured out these events with standardized what we need on each night. Beginning last summer, we kind of caught the promoters a little bit off-guard when we said we also now need additional resources for all of these different things that have been happening, either nationally or internationally, at different large events, and so those were rolled into this year's costs as well. So it's just an increase in cost based on the type and nature of things that we need to prepare for and the potential of possibilities that can occur at those types of events.
Reason I ask, I just want other events coming back saying, well, because they maybe misbudgeted or did something, then they come back and say, well, we need more. So it really comes down to more, that we changed some of what we were asking. Is that correct?
Last year, yes. This year, it was, I thought it was our belief that it was, they knew that the increased costs were coming, but again, you know, over the historical period, they are increased costs, but last year, we caught them off-guard a little bit, but this year, they should have had full knowledge that these are the costs of the events moving forward.
They had a year to plan, and it wasn't their estimate.
Look, folks, my original question was just to get it off the record, just to justify that. I have plenty of figures of what happens when a police department is not sure that you definitely need this money, probably going to use more if you thought about it. It's all the stuff and crazy things that are going on today. Who knows what's going to happen? We always do a great job, so I'm not questioning anybody's reasons for it. I'm sure it's justified.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Reynolds, I'm sorry.
Just to frame this for the council, we go through the process, and we are involved in sponsoring some events. These two events, we are a sponsor. Both agencies knew what was going on with the police services. Both of them agreed, both of them understood it was necessary, and they encouraged that. What they did do is they respectfully came back after their allocations to say, to just ask the question of the Tour Mark Committee, that if there was anything available, and if the Tour Mark Committee was willing to entertain possibly adding a little to help offset those costs, they would appreciate it. As it turned out, we did have an event not happen, and therefore, that money was available, was not requested by anybody else for anything, and so the Tour Mark Committee did consider it and thought that it was reasonable, and they were very appreciative of the respectful ask, and so therefore, that's what they took into consideration in their additional action. So this is something that will probably not happen again. The money through the allocation process is the money, and the amount of expense that we're obligated to incur as decided by the police and fire chief is based on international and national events. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well-spent, I'm sure. Mr. Smith. You know, and Mench made a great point there. We had a...
Event canceled, so that's the only reason we had these extra funds. So we put in the security, and I thought they did a wonderful job, so I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Reynolds. Go ahead. I move to approve the funding allocation of $15,000 to supplement the Nuggets, Rib Cook-Off, and Hot August Nights for additional police costs as recommended by the Tourism Marketing Committee.
Second, Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve 9.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
9.3, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Acceptance of the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee's Mission and Strategic Plan 17 through 20. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Sarah Tony. I'm the Development Director at Notable Music Therapy Services and here as the Chair of the Sparks Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, and I'm just really glad to be here today, so thanks to the council and to the mayor. I'm really excited by what's going on with arts and culture in Sparks. And being, just being... And, and being, just being a part of that. So, just to back up a little bit, this strategic plan is coming out of five public input meetings that we started earlier in the year. And we took everything that we learned from, from what the citizens of Sparks were telling us through this process, and we developed our mission and then came up with a strategic plan from there. Because truly, arts and culture is about solving problems in the community. It's also about building the community that we're in. And so we're doing this in a way to honor Sparks and to, and to really identify what makes Sparks individual and unique, and go from there. So the mission of the City of Sparks Arts and Culture Advisory Committee is to support the community by facilitating investment in the arts and culture in order to nurture creative communities, enhance quality of life, and encourage civic pride. And by that, we are, we're talking about specifically Sparks, because the identity of Sparks is really important to us. So the plan, as we go into the plan, a big part of it is community engagement, advocacy, and communication, so we put that right up in front. And so, and there's audience, the three different audiences that we really want to talk to, you guys are one of them, because we want you to know that we're here to be a part of making your lives better and to making the city better. So arts is an amazing way to solve problems, and so we want to be a part of that. We also want to be part of building vitality and economic strength. Number two is we want to talk to the citizens of Sparks. There's already good work happening. There's already a lot of vitality and art and cultural vitality happening here already, so we need to be telling that story in a way that's coherent and engaging, so that people aren't getting in their cars on Friday after work, driving to Reno. They can be staying in Sparks. And the third is the artists. We want to be talking to artists and about how we can support them and their work here, how we can connect them and the, and the people who live here, how we can connect them and the businesses to lift everybody's boats together. So, going into the plan, we have, we're working on fulfilling our mission through public programming, planning, and design, economic development, and education. And again, this came out a lot of, from the comments from the five initial meetings. So for the initial programming, we were looking at doing a mobile program for all ages and all abilities, in large part to engage marginalized populations, including our veterans or people of, with disabilities or lower income. It's also incredible what can happen when you engage people in art in their own neighborhood. There's a lot of really great stories that can be told about even reduction in crime. So that's one of the things we're looking at. Also, bringing more of Art Town to Sparks. For planning and design, we're available and interested in working with all city departments to facilitate the investments in the city's infrastructure, and just creating an arts-friendly town, and also, again, to help solve problems. So, part of that, so, part of that is the downtown placemaking. Sparks downtown is beautiful, and there's a lot of infrastructure already there, there's a lot of special events already there, but if it's not a special event day, it's awfully quiet. So part of what we want to do is create more of a place where people want to be on a daily basis, and art can really do a lot to do that. So that's what we're, that's part of what we're talking about. Public art, as well as temporary art, creating, coming up with recommendations of where public art should be going, what kind of art should be placed, and also what kind of temporary installations can be coming and going to create a little bit more dynamism in what's going on in town. Oh, am I talking too long? Okay, sorry. And then also economic development. Sorry, I've never done this before. Does it show? So the economic development, I hope you were impressed by some of those numbers that were presented by Alexis and Shosh earlier. It's really pretty incredible to me, as someone who works in the arts nonprofit world, that we may be small as individual organizations, but we do provide an incredible economic boost to what's going on. So I think if we're strategic about it, and when we have every intention to be, that we can bring a lot of economic development into Sparks through bringing more art in to businesses, doing the Last Friday Campaign, there's, there's a lot of things that we can do there. And finally, education. Sparks already does great arts education programming, but we think we can do more, and we can do more to integrate it into the schools and get the word out into what's already available. So that is the rough structure of the plan, and some of the feedback that we've gotten already, I think has been really positive, but also, one of the concerns is that the plan is perhaps a little thin. I think people were thinking that it would be more bold than it is, but one thing to keep in mind is that we have a half-time staff and a fairly modest budget to get started, but we have great intentions. So as we get our feet going and we get some motivation, and we find our own voice as a city in creating the arts and culture that we want to see here, then I'm sure there'll be more bold plans for the future. But as first steps, I feel really strongly about what we've come up with.
Questions, Mr. Dern?
Yes, I think art is awesome as well. I think it's wonderful to go in and check it out and stuff. What's going to be your guys' first win? What I mean by that, you have a list, I've kind of read through all your different things that you, when it comes to something that we could put downtown, do you have any idea of what that might look like yet? Or are we still on the phase where we just know we're putting the budget and we don't know exactly what we want to do yet, or something that we can get behind?
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about the vet program.
Wonderful.
So I, I'm saying this with two hats on. So I'm also Development Director for Notable Music Therapy Services, and the Dracula Foundation people came to us recently, and they want to partner with us to do something for the vets with music. Tina's been saying that she's like, I know we need to talk to you, I know we need to talk to you, we didn't know what to do. And so we decided that maybe the next step was to do a songwriting program for the vets that are already in the writing group, and then invite other, other people in. In music therapy, doing songwriting is an incredibly powerful way to, to express those things that are hard to say. I've seen it a million times, when people can't tell you how they're feeling, but then they can write a song. It's incredible. So what we were thinking about doing is an eight-week program, eight to 12 weeks, depends on, on what the Dracula Foundation ultimately wants to do, and then having a performance at the Sparks Museum. I think it would, it could just be really powerful. And that, and that's something that's already underway, and I called Francine about it last week, and it's like, I think this could really fit into something that the City of Sparks could get behind. So there's stuff like that happening already, yeah. And then in terms of like, public art, Francine would maybe have to answer that one.
So, I have a copy of the, you know that I'm applying for an NEA grant. I just started uploading things this morning, so this is just a copy of the directions. So, kind of long and involved, but it's a very exciting first step of, of putting together the Art Town Grant, which is for a placemaking project for downtown, which will include an extensive energizing public input campaign to bring in all voices, to say what they would like to do downtown. That's the first step, making a placemaking project to make sure that it's reflective of, from very...
Charlie, go ahead.
Thank you for being here, and I think, obviously, you all were there and want to congratulate Francine again on being named Art Advocate of the Year from the Edon Arts and Business Luncheon that was just held last week, that really, truly, if you don't, and I'm not an artist, a lot of us are not, but really understanding how art and business, your speaker, Jay Dick, did an incredible job reminding people that art is business, and that business needs art, and that together, what, what art can do for businesses, and then the economic development and impact, we just saw from Alexis and Shoshana and their, their numbers, that they're not two separate entities. And I think that was a really strong message for me, and I think for other people who are not so integrated in the art community, of really how, as a community, it's a collective, it's economic development, it's really kind of everything coming together. So I'm excited about the Art and Culture Committee and what you plan on doing. I'm especially excited about Victorian Square being redevelopment chair, really looking at downtown and what we're going to be putting down there, from pieces of art to performing arts to visual and mighty, and there's so many possibilities. And, and I hope, I hope those are all moving quickly. I think people will be, I think you're going to get a lot of buy-in from, hopefully, from business and the community, and I think from, from all of us here in, in the council side of it, and I support what you're doing, and thank you for the work you're doing and for what exciting things are to come. Thank you.
Let me clarify that this particular agenda item does not involve a fiscal component today. The city council is not committing to spending funds today?
It does have a budget.
And is that, is that budget what's in the fiscal impact? My problem is, is that the agenda item itself does not indicate or tell, tell the citizenry that the city council is, is contemplating spending money. It's just a consideration discussion, acceptance of a, a mission and strategic plan. There's nothing in there about committing. I see different accounts in here, tourism and marketing, parks and rec, room tax, but there's nothing in the agenda item itself saying that the city council intends to spend a finite or infinite amount of dollars in here.
What's the, what's the, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Attorney. In the city manager's budget recommendations, there were amounts allocated, $150,000 from the infrastructure or the room tax monies, and then some other monies that have been dedicated and being collected by Parks and Recreation on an ongoing basis. The council's approval of that agenda was contingent upon the Arts Commission creating a strategic plan, having a mission and vision, and then they would approach in the future spending of the money that was approved by the council. So there is nothing currently on board to be spent. The spending authorization will go through my office as appropriately and come to this council as is required by the rules for spending money. For instance, right now, we have applied for a grant through the National Endowment for the Arts that would take the $150,000 that the council approved to spend of room tax money. It would double it, for all intents and purposes, as, as a match that would improve that. So we're not in the position to really spend money at this point, but the money and the spending and the process has already been approved by the council through the fiscal 18 budget.
My question is, does this agenda item commit the city council to spending money today?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
Wait around one second.
No, I was thinking that the, the money would be in the plan.
There, there is a budget for some of the small programs.
Page nine.
That we have in our arts fund that we will be spending in the future.
Is that in the plan that we're hoarding on today?
Yes.
The money, okay, so there is some money attached.
Isn't just agree? I think that, my understanding, this is just agreement to what we've already said yes to. We already said yes to that money. So this, they're just showing us the budget of what we said yes to. So however you want to semantic it, all we're doing is, is taking, we said yes to this already. This is done. Now you're just telling us how you're going to spend the money we said yes to.
I move to accept the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee's mission and strategy plan 2017 through 2020.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Dern. We've been looking for this for a long, long time. I know I've been here since 99.
We're just getting started.
It's time to get started, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
On to 9.4, consideration discussion and possible approval of a contract, AC 5409 with Aspen Developers Corporation. I want to know what the reason for... I know the reason for the tie, but why the three light blue shirts? Rundle, Speed Hump, and you guys, you guys emailed back and forth today and figure out what you're going to want.
We've had a plan for weeks, yes.
You guys never do anything without a plan, right?
No, no, engineers don't.
Andy.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, members of council. For the record, Andy Hummel, Utility Manager for the City of Sparks. And today, I'm presenting the Bergen Way Storm Drain Project for your consideration. This project was included in the fiscal year 17 capital improvement plan, basically addresses localized drainage issues that we have down in that area of the Sparks Industrial Center. It's generally located south of East Glendale Avenue and just east of McCarran Boulevard, all of our drainage, and that general vicinity is all on the street. We don't have any pipes under the street in that area in there, so any small storm, it starts overrunning the curb, causing problems for all the businesses down there. So this project will install catchbasins, inlets, ground piping, and a stormwater interceptor vault to capture and convey stormwater flows to our infrastructure in East Glendale Avenue, as well as reduce pollutants such as oils, sediment, trash. Total of five bids were received. Aspen Developers was the low bidder on the project at $423,140. No discrepancies were noted during the bidding process, and we recommend approval. Concludes my presentation. Available for any questions.
Questions, Brad.
Mayor, I've been advised by council to abstain from this 9.4. I myself will not benefit in any way from this program, but my son-in-law is the general manager of that company, and I just caught that, I didn't even know he was doing this. So I will be abstaining.
Lawson.
Does this eliminate our swimming pool down there?
Yeah, we have, right at that intersection of Bergen and...
We need pools, don't give a...
It's not deep enough to enjoy, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Andy, a question, the engineer's estimate was $384,000. Other than the price we're seeing daily of everything, construction and bidding, was that just a normal increase, or was there something that changed for it to the lowest bid to be that much difference from what your estimate was?
I think it's timing. When we opened the bids on this, it was the hurricanes that just started hitting, and a lot of the pipes, the resins that make the pipes, like PVC pipe is a common material that would have been used for this project, those materials, a lot of them come in through Houston, so there's a lot of uncertainty. We are hearing from some of our local suppliers that if you're going to be using a plastic pipe, get it ordered, but they can't promise when it'll be here, so they're looking at other materials, things like that. So I think that's some of what we saw in these bids being slightly higher.
So were those, even though we're through the whole hurricane and supplies should be increased by now, could this number be lower perhaps? Because when they bid it, they knew that it might be higher, would, now that inventory's flowing again, could it possibly be lower? This would be the most, would we have a chance that it would decrease? Or, because I wouldn't say the prices should, should stay up, or do they?
What we're hearing as recently is today from some of the local suppliers, they do not know when that will change, actually. That the PVC pipe especially is going to be expensive for a while. Yep.
Anyone else have questions? Can I make a motion? Mr. Dern?
I move to approve the contract with Aspen Developers Corporation. Contract with Aspen Developers Corporation for the Bergen Way Storm Drain Project in the amount of $423,140.
Moved by Mr. Derney, seconded by Mr. Abbott to approve 9.4 as outlined by staff. Any additional questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously with one abstention. Okay, let's move on to number 9.5, consideration discussion, possible approval of amendment number one to the disposition and development agreement between SWD Quarry Bridges LLC, Redevelopment Agency of the City of Sparks, and the City of Sparks for an airspace easement across city property. Mr. Armando Ornalis.
Mayor Martini, members of the city council, I'm Armando Ornalis, the Assistant Community Services Director. This agenda item requests city council and later today Redevelopment Agency consideration of and approval of an amendment to the disposition and development agreement between the Redevelopment Agency, the City of Sparks, and SWD Quarry Bridges LLC, which is an entity created by Silverwing Development specifically for development of the Bridges project. The city and the agency originally entered into the DDA with a developer about 15 months ago in June of 2016, and it provided for the sale of Redevelopment Agency property for the Bridges mixed-use project in Victorian Square. This proposed amendment, number one, to the DDA would basically do two things. First, it would grant the developer an additional airspace easement to construct at its sole expense a pedestrian bridge connecting the Bridges project to the city parking garage, which is located directly adjacent to the Victorian Square Movie Theater. So I'm looking for the graphic up here on the screen. Pardon me while I find it. Can you open it up, Rich, for me, please? Thank you. I'm not seeing it right off the bat. So when I say additional easement, there are other airspace easements associated with this project. There is an airspace easement associated with the bridge that will connect the two parts of the project over Avenue of the Oaks. There are also airspace easements associated with balconies for the property, because, you know, these are buildings that are built right to the property line. And so basically, this connects the northern parcel of the Bridges project with the parking garage that the city owns next to the theater directly to the north. There's about a 10-foot space. The Bridges goes up to the property line. The city parking garage is set back about 10 feet, and this would provide that easement across the city's parcel to. The second part of amendment number one would grant the developer the option of obtaining passes for project residents to park up to 50 passenger vehicles in the city parking garage. The city retains, per this agreement or this amendment, the right to charge Silverwing a fee for parking in the city garage either on a permanent or an intermittent basis. When and if the city imposes a charge, the fee is spelled out. It would be essentially a pro-rata share of the city's annual operation and maintenance costs for the city parking garage. So 50 spaces equates to approximately 7% of the spaces in the garage. So the fee would be equal to approximately 7% of those costs. There is an alternative method provided for in the agreement, which is, you know, the city and the developer can choose to calculate some other basis for the payment. Practically speaking, this probably only comes into play when and if the city decides that it's going to control access to the garage. Because right now, it's a public parking garage. Anybody can park there. And so, you know, if we reach the point where, okay, we need to control access to parking, you know, similar, for example, to the parking gallery in downtown Reno, that, for example, theater patrons use down there, then we would probably be, because we have, you know, a lot of the garage, and we would potentially be contracting with someone to, you know, to staff the kiosk and control access in and out of the garage. Practically speaking, that's likely when this provision of amendment number one would kick in. So Jay Witt requested these changes to the DDA when it became apparent to him that, based on his experience with leasing and managing the Fountain House project, that residents of the 194 Bridges Apartments will probably own more cars than can be parked in the garages that the Bridges is constructing. So more specifically, Mr. Witt anticipates that Bridges residents will own 1.3 vehicles per dwelling unit. So if you translate that, 1.3 vehicles per unit times 194 units equals 252 spaces that would be needed approximately for the residents. The Bridges has 202 parking stalls, so that leaves a shortfall approximately of 50 spaces. So when Mr. Witt requested this from city staff, before we agreed to, you know, bring this forward to the council and the agency and support it frankly, we decided it was time to take a more comprehensive look at parking in the Victorian Square area. And so towards that end, city engineer John Erickson commissioned two parking analyses. The first one was initially for that western side of Victorian Square, which is essentially from 11th Street over to 15th Street, and then a second one for the area from 11th Street all the way to Pyramid. And ultimately, they were combined into the parking analysis that is attached to your staff report. The analysis looked at, documented the existing parking supply in downtown in terms of on-street parking, public parking lots, and in public parking structures. And then it looked at the demand for parking from all of the various uses in our Victorian Square area. And so in doing that, we looked at both properties as they're currently developed, and then because we still have a number of parcels to be developed, including the parcels right along the plaza, for example, we attributed demand to those parcels as well. So, and then the demand for each parcel was calculated using data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and looked at, did a peak hour analysis. So if you have questions about the parking analysis, both John Erickson is here, as well as Lauren Chilton of Traffic Works, who actually did the analysis, and they probably can give you much more depth in terms of that analysis than I can. But I'll summarize and say that the analysis concludes that there is sufficient parking within the district to accommodate both the existing and prospective land uses, including the movie theater, and to permit at least 50 Bridges resident vehicles to routinely park in the city parking garage. So in a nutshell, we felt that, you know, we could grant this in this amendment to the DDA for this project and still have sufficient parking in the long run. So with that, staff is recommending approval of amendment number one to the Bridges DDA, and I'll conclude my presentation.
How many parking spots are on each floor?
There are, well, I'll refer you to the top floor. Let me take a look at the analysis. Yeah, it would be connecting the two, basically the top deck to the top deck. And in that, on the fourth floor, there are approximately 146 parking spaces, or there are, they were counted.
Do we anticipate labeling these as Bridges parking spaces, or first come, first served? They get there, they don't have one, too bad?
First come, first served. We are going to operate this, continue to operate this as a public parking structure.
Have a special event, and resident comes home at 10 o'clock at night, and there's no parking at the garage, they're SOL?
Yeah, I mean, I think until such time as we actually, you know, control for parking, it's going to be first come, first served.
We're pretty excited about what's happening down there. And so I know Jay Witt's out there, and I just want to continue to just encourage the whole thing. But I do think that it's good forward-thinking to put that in, because at first, you won't need to use it at all, because you're not, it won't be filled. So that's upon capacity that they'll need to use that. They're going to put a gate there so people can't come in. Is that the idea? That they're, if you're putting that bridge across, how?
Bridge would be restricted to residents, use of the bridge would be restricted to residents of the Bridges. You know, there would be, I would assume that there'd be some, either car key or other control access, so that the, you know, only residents could go from our parking structure over to their building.
I just, yeah, I've been up on that top floor during times of parking or doing whatever, and it's rarely ever, at this point, even when our movie theater was functioning at full. I mean, the only time I think it ever filled up was those two event times.
Yeah, and event parking is, you know, another matter altogether. You know, we really can't, we would never be able to provide enough event parking. But, you know, I think, to editorialize just a little bit, I mean, I think, you know, we're not quite there yet, but we're maybe starting to anticipate that at some point we'll have a parking problem. We've always felt that that would be a good problem to have, because that means we have a lot of uses and activity and demand for parking downtown. That's not quite the case even today.
So, Armando, the 50 spots that are there, those cars or those residents won't have necessarily a parking sticker or hang tag for those vehicles, so that, you know, on that top level, it's not going to be designated 50 specific spots. But is there any way of identifying or need to identify the vehicles from those 50 spots? And when we have, like, Fountain House people, maybe they do now, parking over in the garage. Do you anticipate that a problem, or are we going to be on parking spots? Because what I understand from, I think, information you gave us before, is the movie theater itself, because of the capacity, is going to be so much less in the number of seats in the movie theater, that that has reduced possible parking need of the theater itself? I mean, is, I know that, I'm kind of throwing it all together, sorry.
The parking passes, we would anticipate, again, only being necessary when we have controlled, if and when we have controlled access into the garage. So, you know, in other words, a resident pulls in, they have a parking pass, they're allowed to go in without paying, or really, to exit without paying, and that's when that would come into play. As I said, Mr. Chilton and Mr. Erickson can address the parking analysis in much greater detail. But in a nutshell, the issue really only starts to arise when there is additional development at Victorian Square, you know, when those plaza parcels develop, for example, and are generating their additional demand. As you alluded to, the demand for the theater is expected to be significantly less, you know, when it's reconfigured than it was previously. Previously, there were 3,200 seats in those 14 auditoriums. The, you know, the plans that have been submitted by Sayufian Galaxy indicate that there will be 1,050 seats, so roughly, you know, about just over 30%, a little over 30% of the original seat count in that theater. The analysis includes a peak estimate for the, you know, the demand of the theater for spaces. And I think certainly, between the theater and these uses, the current uses, really not an issue at all. It's looking forward to that date when hopefully, all these other, all those other development occurs, and we're looking at an issue.
Yeah, my question is whether or not the applicant has been informed that by constructing this bridge itself at its sole expense, and later on down the road, if they are given parking spots, those all could create taxable events under Nevada law, and making sure that the city will not be responsible for payment of any real or personal property taxes that may or may not accrue because of this venture.
City Attorney Adams, we did include a statement in the staff report that addresses that specifically. I believe I, Mr. Witt can verify it, but I believe that I communicated that to him. And so that's on the record, if you will.
All I wanted to do was get it on the record. Thank you, sir.
Trying to figure out what to do at that point, that at that time, we all get to sit down with the owner, and we all get to say, here's what we're doing, or is it just 50 spot? How does that lay out? Is there anything where we can just say, I mean, because what we're talking about now makes sense, that's easy. But if we talk about the idea, when we start running into problems, we need to make sure whoever's all involved, that we sit down and put the brains together and come up, and is that just a given that we get to do that, or?
Well, this is binding. You know, I think for this project to be able to rely on this parking, if you will, you know, it needs to run with the development agreement and essentially a right with the property that would be recorded against that, this agreement is recorded against that property. You know, as with any agreement, any real estate-related agreement in particular, when and if one or both parties see a need to make a change to it, then, you know, basically, binding commitment.
I only mean, let's say we have to put the kiosks down there, and we have to put stickers in now, or something of that fashion.
That's anticipated.
That's anticipated, but we haven't, we don't have the details. And at that point, are we going to, does that give us the ability to come back at that point and help give more detail at that time? Or is that just up to the owner to do? I mean, again, Jay's definitely obviously working this now, but what if another owner at that time is in there, and someone who doesn't want to work with us as well, and we want this, and they're saying, no, I don't want to do that?
Garage, and again, we expressly reserve the rights.
So we get the right at that point to say this?
That's the way I understand. We're giving away 50 spots that go with that property if Jay sells it or doesn't sell it.
That is essentially correct. I mean, obviously, we retain the right to charge for the spot.
Right. There's other things that can happen, but those 50 spots belong to that project.
Yeah, we're committing to that, yes.
I move to approve amendment number one to the disposition and development agreement for the Bridges project.
Second, Mr. Abbott. Motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Abbott to approve 9.5 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Armando. 9.6, consideration and possible affirmation of the City of Sparks' intent to continue to participate during fiscal years '18 through 2020 as a member of the Washoe County Home Consortium.
Jim Rundle, Planning Manager, here to discuss an item for the city council to consider directing the city manager to affirm in writing to the City of Reno, which is the lead agency for the home consortium. The City of Sparks is intent to continue to participate as a member of the home consortium, which is a, the Washoe County Home Consortium is a formalized city management agreement. This is a regional mechanism for providing state's federal funding to support the home consortium of the City of Sparks. The intergovernmental agreement is renewed, has been renewed every three years, and this is the third year. So Reno is asking for us to consider renewing the agreement. It does include an automatic renewal provision, but the Department of Housing and Urban Development has asked that the city provide and continue to renew that agreement. Through the home consortium, the City of Sparks has had a couple of projects. One is the Lincoln Project, just across the way, the project at the City Hall Apartments, which is directly across the street, south of City Hall, the project with the former Bank of America building, not later included, the project over Office Sullivan, and then other projects that's being constructed on Odd Lake Park, which is a recent effort. A recent lead technical review committee, which I stood on, forwarded the recommendation to approval of a project event directors, which include Sparks City Manager, Reno City Manager, and County Manager, forwarded a recommendation to the government board to order money to two projects, and again, the staff is recommending that Sparks would like to continue the home consortium. That concludes my presentation.
Questions for Mr. Rundle? Ms. Lawson?
I'm going to make a motion. We don't have any questions.
Any questions?
I'm going to direct the city manager to affirm in writing the Sparks' intent to continue to participate as a member of the Washoe County Home Consortium from fiscal years 2018 through 2020.
Second. Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve the agenda 9.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Jim. Move on to public hearings. Public hearing, consideration and possible approval to submit the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report caper for program year two, fiscal years '16, '17.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, members of the city council. George Graham, housing specialist, for the record. specialist, for the record. Today, I'd like to present, while I'd be presenting for your consideration and approval. The staff recommends approval of the CAPR, which is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for submission. It would be for program year two, fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, and for submission to HUD, Housing, Urban Development Department. The CAPR provides an overview of the City of Sparks, what we experienced as far as expending CBG funds, as well as Washoe County Home Consortium funds, and the contribution the expenditures had in our, in the Sparks community over, again, fiscal year two thousand sixteen, seventeen, is what it is. The, the specifics we've seen, well, as far as home funds goes, we had a, a grand opening of, in September of two thousand sixteen, with the, the senior development on Fourth Street and Lincoln Way, forty-five units. As far as CBG funds, we've expended funding to supplement the Community Assistance Center for homeless, also for housing, affordable housing programs. We've expended additional funding to support that and emergency repair grant programs, and other operations through the city as far as fair housing and continuum of care, other, other activities regarding that. And so, this is a summary of all what we've done, what transpired over the past year. That concludes really a summary of what I'd like to present today, and I recommend approval that we may submit the report to HUD. That concludes my presentation, and I'm open to any questions.
Open it to the public. Anyone in the public want to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Questions or action? Mr. Smith?
Joe, Joe always do a good job in this stuff, so we appreciate that. I move to approve the middle of the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for program year two, FY sixteen, seventeen, for the City of Sparks, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve J. David ten point one. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, George.
Thank you all.
All permanent buildings of facilities constructed on or after October one, two thousand seventeen, that are used by the public and contain a public restroom to provide a baby changing table. Go ahead, Mr. Miranda, it's pretty exciting stuff here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council. For the record, Mark Miranda, your building official for the City of Sparks. Today, I am here to discuss what was recently in the nineteen seventy-nine session of the Nevada State Legislature, AB Bill two forty-one dash R one, that this, that mandates the local governments require certain permanent buildings and facilities used by the public that are constructed on or after October first, to be equipped with baby changing tables. The adoption of the proposed bill will amend by ordinance Title fifteen of the Sparks Municipal Code to comply with the provisions of AB two forty-one dash R one. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
So since this is, this, none of our current buildings would be, we would be exempt, it's only anything, any new buildings constructed after October first would, this would apply. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. I'll open anyone in the public like to speak to this particular item. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action. Questions or a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to adopt, I move to adopt Bill twenty-seven, twenty-three in ordinance amending Title fifteen to add section fifteen dash oh five dash one oh four dash one dash four to the Sparks Municipal Code.
Second. Mr. Abbott? Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Abbott to approve ten point twos outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mark. Ten point three, public hearing, consideration possible approval of the collective bargaining agreement, AC fifty-four twelve, between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Police Detective Association. Mr. Krutz?
Mayor Martini, members of the council, for the record, Neil Krutz, Assistant City Manager, here today on behalf of City Manager Steve Driscoll with, and I think I'm going to be here for a few minutes, because I have a total of four collective bargaining agreements and four employee resolutions for your consideration today, that, that look at, at, at providing pay and benefits for our employees ranging from one to as long as a three-year period. So, starting with the first item, ten point three, is with the SPPA, the non-supervisory unit, or otherwise stated, our, our police officers. And each one of these agreements, and it's collective bargaining agreements that's in front of you today, is a result of many, many hours of good discussion between the city's management staff and various members of our employee collective bargaining units. I thoroughly enjoyed the opportunity to meet with our employees in this setting and, and talk about our common understanding and desire to serve the public. That drove all of our conversations. With that, certainly, everybody, myself included, wants to be paid appropriately for, for the work that they're doing. So, out of those discussions came the agreements that are in front of you today. So, with that, I will jump into some of the particulars that relate to the SPPA non-supervisory agreement. It is, it does have a proposed three-year term, running from July first of, of this calendar year through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty, so that'd be a three fiscal year deal. In that deal, we have negotiated, and the bargaining unit has tentatively agreed, and agreed and, and voted to ratify, in the first year, a cost of living adjustment in the amount of one point eight percent, that would be retroactive back to July first of this fiscal year. Inasmuch as it's a three-year deal, the cost of living adjustment for years two and three would, would float based on what the CPI does in those, those particular timeframes, but guaranteed to be no lower than one percent. So, the bargaining unit has always guaranteed a minimum, at very least, a minimum raise, and at the upper end, that management and yourselves are guaranteed an increase in expenditures no greater than three percent. So, boil that down, it's going to be CPI in years two and three, ranging between one and, one and three percent. That does lead to a, a range of possible fiscal impacts. We know what, what this year's is, is likely to be, but you know, we do have ranges in, in years two and three, and you see that in the, in the spreadsheet that, that our, that our, our staff and the finance department prepared for us to, to consider as, as we get into that. But more specifically, the fiscal year eighteen, or the year that we're in now, the financial impact is estimated at a hundred and fifty-one thousand, three thousand dollars in additional funds, and then in years nineteen and twenty, it ranges from roughly eighty-five thousand to an additional two hundred and fifty-six, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand each of those years, those being additive, inasmuch as the, the CPI can float between one and three in each of those years. So, there, we are talking a significant expenditure of city assets. The second group that I want to talk about is a range adjustment. Per NRS two eighty-eight, when it comes to bargaining negotiations with our, our first responders, our public safety staff, if you will, we are required to conduct a comparable pay analysis, essentially with the, the other local governments that we compete with for talent. And what we found in, in the case of our non-supervisory folks, or our police officers, that we are a bit below the market. We, we found that in that comparable pay analysis, that we are about four point six percent behind. And, and that, so we, we wanted to, to make that kind of adjustment so that we can stay competitive as we, as we seek talent. We do have higher hiring standards. It is tougher to get on with the Sparks Police than it is with the other agencies locally, and, and so we negotiated with, with that in mind, that, you know, that we do want to be just a little bit ahead of, of, of what the, what the average is doing. But understanding that we are in a bit of a, of a fiscal crunch, and as you'll recall, your finance director walked you so delicately through this morning, that we are, we are cash flow conscious. So, we worked with, with the unit to spread that catch-up, if you will, that range adjustment over the next three fiscal years. So, we would, we would essentially make the upper end of the, of the spreading that four point six out, twenty-five percent in the first year, thirty-five percent in the second year, and forty percent in the third year. So, a little bit backloading the catch-up provision. So, I greatly appreciate the willingness to acknowledge that we're in, we're, we're in tough cash flow times, that we are trying to make an effort to, to, to stay competitive in this market. Next up is special assignment pay. We did work cooperatively with, with Chief Allen and his command staff to, to process a request from the, from the union to set up a major accident investigations team and provide special pay for that. And that would be a series of specially trained officers who would receive special assignment pay for that. There would be a total of five of them in this unit at a hundred bucks a pay period, so really a thirteen thousand dollar financial impact in any given year. And those, in, in being on that special assignment team, those officers would be required to respond, you know, anytime we have a major accident in Sparks, so that we can get it thoroughly and adequately investigated. So, we, we thought from a management perspective that, that made good sense. Next up is, is night differential pay. Your, your police operations are done on a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five basis, and, and previous language in the collective bargaining agreement had night differential pay for those employees who worked on, on swing and on grave. And as shifts do tend to, to change a bit here and there, and sometimes people are held over, that it led to a fair amount of confusion, and quite a bit of administrative time went in to tracking and making sure that we were appropriately paying that night differential pay. Because we certainly want to, want to keep our employees whole, but we only want to pay for what we're contractually obligated to. So, we worked with the union this time around to simplify that, and, and, and come up with set hours that we would pay night differential pay on. And so, anything between five PM and six AM will be, will be paid as additional night differential pay. We negotiated a, a rate that was aimed at being as cost neutral as possible, but not really wanting to hit anybody that was receiving that pay today, and acknowledging that we're going to receive a, a significant administrative benefit by not having to spend all that time tracking, that we will be, you know, able to use very effectively the NovaTime type keeping software system to, to keep track of that night differential pay. We did negotiate a, a rate that's going to increase it from two twenty-five an hour for night differential pay to three ten. The, the gross fiscal impact there for lumping all of the officers together is estimated to be about twenty-two thousand dollars a year. And we got after that by, by, you know, kind of taking a look at, at highs and lows and the middle, you know, in a, in a, in a, in a quiet week, in the middle of the year, say in the middle of winter, you might not have that much, but you, you're certainly have the opportunity for more during special event season, when we've got lots of people that are working in those evenings. So, then we picked one that, that was, that was in the middle, and we used that to, to provide the, the financial estimate there. The next one is, is health care upon retirement, and this is probably the most significant conceptual change that we arrived at through, through our discussions. You know, as, as you know, the, the, the members of this unit are eligible for sick leave conversion and sick leave cash out at the time of retirement. We were actually, your, your negotiating team was, was approached by the command staff from the police department with an idea that, you know, was there a way that we could contemplate allowing employees who had been with us for a long period of time, as they got close to the end of their career, to start transferring that cash pre-retirement into their deferred compensation or their four fifty-seven B plan, to give them additional opportunities to, to grow that money beyond any, any cost of living or range adjustments that might come. And, and, you know, we, we, as a, as a staff, spent quite a bit of time noodling, noodling on that idea, certainly seeing the, you know, the, the benefit certainly to the employee, but also seeing the, you know, the, the potential benefits to, to the city inasmuch as one of the requirements in, in cashing out your sick leave is that you agree at retirement to, to leave the city's health plan and find insurance on your own, or if you want to come back to the city's health plan, which you're able to do in even a number of years, you're doing it at your own cost. And as we're, one of the things we're very cognizant of is, is trying to control our long-term health care costs. We saw an opportunity here that was a, a win for the employees and a win for the city. But again, trying to do it in a, in a way that's conscious of our, our limited cash flows, we came up with the, with the following proposal that, that the, that the unit did agree on, and that is that once an employee has a, a minimum of twenty years per service credit, and that doesn't all need to be with the City of Sparks, certainly for a lot of them it is, that we, they hire in young and they stay here their whole career, but we do end up with a number of officers who, who come to us with a number of years of experience under their belt. You heard from one of them this morning, an officer Gallup. We wanted to set it up with the, the understanding that up until recently, the, the basic career duration for a, for a sworn officer was, was twenty-five years or greater, but a lot of them, you know, do, do retire in that twenty-five-year window, that once they'd reached twenty years credit, we would allow them in what is essentially the last five years of their career, to start transferring a, a moderate amount of cash out of the, the sick leave bank, if you will, and, and into their four fifty-seven plan. So, we came up with a, with a cap of, of ten thousand dollars a year. They would elect to do that on an annual basis, with the understanding that once they had done it once, once they had elected to do that, that they were committing, that they were not going to stay on the city's plan at the city's cost post-retirement, and then put a limit that they could do no more than five years. So, that in the situation where somebody elected at year twenty to start the program, got to year twenty-four and a half and decided they weren't quite ready to retire yet, great, stay working, stay on, stay on the payroll, but we're not going to continue allowing you to put that, you know, that additional ten grand a year in. So, that, you know, that kind of limits the city exposure there. And I, I am pleased to report that we were able to, to negotiate those, those terms collectively, and that's, that's part of the, part of the proposal that's in front of you today for consideration. It does come, certainly at a, you know, at a, at a cost. Our finance department estimates that the fiscal impact of this will be up to thirty thousand dollars a year in, in, in general fund. So, essentially, they're looking at up to three employees a year using, using this, using this new, this new benefit. And then, two, two relatively minor items that I want to spend just a little bit of time on are related to non-service-related death of an employee. We did add a section that would allow employee, the employees' estate to receive a one-time payment from the employee's sick leave balance, certainly subject to the cash out schedule that's already in the agreement, of a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars. So, that was, was something that we negotiated. And we wanted to, in the name of administrative efficiency, you know, we, we have that twenty-five thousand dollar cash out limit, it's something we've had for a few years now. And every time, again, we run into a situation where, where we have an employee who has just over that limit, let's say they have twenty-five thousand two hundred dollars, twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Administratively, it'd be much easier, make much more sense for the city to write one check and close the account than it would to keep track of that amount for a whole year and then have to send out another check. So, what we've put in the collective bargaining agreement, and we're asking you to approve, is providing the financial services director at his discretion to pay out any remaining balances that are nominally over the, the amounts that are in, in the collective bargaining agreement. So, you know, again, just trying to be a little bit more efficient in the, in the way that we conduct our business. So, that's really the, the, the highlights of the, of the financial impact items there. Again, I'd like to, to thank the, the staff from the SPPA, all, all of their units. This is just the first of, of three. We, we enjoyed, I thought, a good heartfelt, and at times lively, conversation that brought us to this point today. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. They will be, there's a lot of similarity. Most of the items that I went through here today affect all of the SPPA, all three SPPA, but they do not go through all of the units. And, you know, from Yes, sir. And there, and there, three of the, three of the items, the three SPPA items on your agenda today are substantially, the differences there, the pay range adjustments vary by whether it's non-supervisor to sergeant to lieutenant. Then, when we do get to the fourth collective bargaining agreement, that is with your, your fire chiefs, your association of fire chiefs, and that has a little bit different, little bit different form to it. It's not drastically different, but it's not the same agreement that we, we hammered out with SPPA. They're, they're different groups.
All I'm trying to do is get by all the minutia that's going to be on all the contracts and get it into one and get it into one thing, so I, I understand what you're saying.
I will, I promise to not belabor the point as I get into the various agreements. Okay.
Questions, Mr. Lawson.
Neil, the CPI-
I increase, do we have a CPI index source that we've agreed to in the contract?
Yes, we do, and I-
Doesn't matter who it is, as long as we, that argument is settled today-
Yes, yeah, we-
And not a year from now, that's-
We saw that coming, we actually, that's a lesson we learned from other agencies in the, in the valley. You can Google CPI and get 50 of them. And, and so, we nailed down with great specificity and with, with Jeff Kronk's help exactly which CPI that we are referencing, the point in which, in the year that we are going to make the comparison. We set it up so that we can appropriately budget for the, you know, for the year coming up, so we're going to take the look based on the December numbers, so that in January we'll know where we stand. And, and, and we provided that to everybody up front and said, let's go make sure we can find this, and then nobody got tripped up, and we all landed in the same place.
Well, it's funny you bring up this, that's my second question. What's a nominal overage amount? I mean, we've given you guys some latitude on interpretation of the ordinances of 10%. I mean, that's something that we should have in there as a number, that nominal meaning up to X dollars, that he could just make it happen?
We kicked, we kicked around actually putting a percentage or a fixed number in there, and what we kept circling back to was that then there's always going to be the, the, the number that's that plus 38 cents. So, why don't we just leave it, you know, why don't we leave it to his discretion as to what's nominal and as to what, he says, hey, I'm, this is a little bit big here, I'm not quite comfortable. And, 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 you know, we have, we have a great deal of faith in our financial services director. And, and so, you know, essentially, we're asking you to give him the, the leeway to, to set his, his comfort level. I under, I, I can appreciate that you're a little hesitant.
I know he'll always err, err on the side of conservatives, so, okay. I can live with that.
Been good watching this. This is my first year getting to watch all this unfold, and, and then I also, I'm a part of some other groups that are not unfolding as well, so I would say to our city workers who are watching this and to you and your team, good job. And it seems that, it's nice to have that relationship where it seems that people are pointing what's best for Sparks and looking at that on a regular basis, and I hope that just stays a continuation of what we do, so it's good.
Okay, anyone else have questions?
So, these are all public hearing items, I'm presuming, so we're going to start with 10.3? And then go from there, okay. This is a public hearing, 10.3. Anybody in the audience want to talk to us about 10.3? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the council for action. Any questions or action, Mr. Abbott?
I just think I make a motion.
Please, never hesitate.
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Police Protective Association, non-supervisory unit for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Abbott, second by Mr. Smith to approve 10.3. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 10.40 questions for Mr. Krutz or any, any items that you want to discuss, Mr. Krutz?
Yes, sir. If, if, if that's okay with you, the, the, the key difference between the non-sworn of the police officers and the sergeants is the pay range adjustment. Otherwise, it's, it's a three-year deal, 1.8 in the first year, retroactive to July 1st, CPI ranging years two and three. We did find through our comparable analysis that we are a little bit further behind with our sergeants. So, the, the total range adjustment there is, is proposed at 8.7%. And again, it's spread out over the same three-year period, backloaded just like the other one. But, but, you know, in as much as we are, we are further behind, it's, it's a bigger number. Same major accident investigation team, there will be a sergeant in charge of that team, that's a single body, fiscal impact $2,600, it's 100 bucks a pay period. Night differential pay, while the, the figures are the same, the, you know, the general idea is, or while the figures are a little bit different, I'm sorry, the, the general idea is the same and the fiscal impact there is relatively small, in as much as you might expect, our sergeant's group is a relatively small one as, as well. And then the same, you know, health care upon retirement, the sick leave cash out into deferred comp with, with 20 years of, of service. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for you.
If you have a question, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Questions? Motion, Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Police Protective Association Sergeant's Unit for July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Dare to approve 10.40. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Moving on, 10.5. Anything special here, Neil?
Just the, the same kind of, of difference, in as much as now we're talking about lieutenants, the pay range adjustment is, is down from the 8.7 in the sergeants to 7.1. In the lieutenants, again, spread over three years, it's a three-year deal, 1.8 CPI and CPI. The night differential savings is actually a little net small savings for the city going to the, the strict hours, but again, it, you know, was intended to be largely, largely cost neutral, the same sick leave cash out into deferred comp.
Really just your images. Questions for Neil? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I'll bring it to the public for action. Any questions from the public about this particular contract? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Questions or motion, Mr. Smith?
Motion, I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sparks and Sparks Police Protective Association Lieutenants Unit for July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 10.5 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 10.6, public hearing, consideration possible approval of the deputy chiefs. Anything different here or?
One key difference is this is an employee resolution and not a collective bargaining. Okay. Two deputy police chiefs are not in a union. They are salaried employees with the city. Otherwise, it's a three-year, it's a three-year term, just like the three you've already approved, 1.8% cost of living in year one, based on the COLA range between one and three in years two and three, some language cleanup that defines proration of, of longevity pay at, at termination. And then one additional cleanup, and it's something that we're doing in, in all of the management-related employee resolutions, and that is in dealing with the amount employees who were hired after July 1st of 2010 pay for their dependent health care coverage. In each of those resolution groups, in its deputy chiefs, its mid-management, its city attorneys, and it's even in the executive's resolution, anybody hired after that point in time had to pay 50% of their dependent health care coverage. That was a goal that the city's negotiating team had going back a decade or so ago to, to go there citywide. We did not get there with, with our other bargaining units, we got to 25%. So, in the name of equity, you know, in, in treating employees who are similarly situated in, in the same equitable manner, we are rolling back, proposing to roll back the dependent care monthly payment from 50% to 25%. Other than that, it's, it's very similar to the three you've just approved.
Questions for Neil?
This too is a public hearing. So, I'll bring it to the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular item? Yes, sir, come on up. If you want to make a comment on this, we need to have you at the, up here at the podium, and we need you to give us your name, please. The only question, the only question I have is, is the money here in the Sparks budget to pay for all of this? It is there. Okay, great, that's all I want to know, thank you. Council on 10.6? Where's my mouse, Bill?
Didn't notice.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Any questions? Mr. Dare?
I move to adopt the Deputy Chief Employee Resolution Number 3320 for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020. Ms. Bybee? Second.
Moved by Mr. Dare, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 10.6 as outlined by staff. Any further questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, Neil, 10.7?
7 is, is back to the world of collective bargaining, and this is, is with the fire department classified chief officers unit, so this is your, your battalion chiefs, your fire marshal, and your division chiefs. It is a, the, the proposed deal has a three-year term, has been tentatively agreed and ratified, ratified upon vote of the, of the union, so it would run retroactively to July 1st of 2017 through June 30th of 2020. The, the cost of living arrangement here is a little bit different in, in that it's fixed in each of the three years, where the, our, our discussions with the, with the chiefs led us to 1.8% in this fiscal year, and then set both the following two fiscal years at 2% in each of those years. So, rather than a range, you've got a fixed number, number to work with. In terms of pay range adjustment, as I referenced earlier, with our public safety professionals per NRS 288, we're required to take a look at, at pay comparables. We found that our battalion chiefs are 4.9% underpaid compared to, compared to the, the group of, of local governments that we compete for talent with. So, we, we struck the same deal to, to spread it out over the three-year period, backloaded a little bit. The one difference is that the, the way our, our fire department is administered, rather than having, you know, specific anniversary dates that, that, that the officer ties to, we, we tied this to, you know, essentially the first pay period in January of each year, so they'll get that portion of the pay range adjustment in mid-year. And, and they'll get the, the, the cost of living adjustment at, at, at the beginning of the fiscal year. Moving on from there, we did, did clarify the language on acting temporary pay so that it is easier to, to read, understand, and administer. And we also agreed that whenever we have a, a battalion chief or a division chief who is acting as, as the fire chief, while the fire chief is, is out of town, that in as much as they're hourly employees, and at that point in time, you know, they're, they're strictly speaking, the phone can ring for them at any point in time as the chief, that we're going to continue to pay just that 5% that we would normally pay during their working hours, we'll continue to pay that 5%. That they've got to be that accessible to us as, as we deal with any issues between the city. After that, the, the changes are relatively minor. We, we did agree to increase the amount of, of annual leave accrual, the maximum annual leave accrual amount from 380 to 400 hours, an additional 20 hours that they can have on the books, a relatively small item there. We did change the payout of compensatory time from automatic to not an automatic that, you know, so that it's, they can build up a little bit larger balance rather than have it cashed out and just fill it back up every year. That was, was something that they requested and, and had a nominal financial impact, 18,000 in the, in the year that we're in and up to 20 out in the third year, so not a, not a, not a big dollar amount, if you will. And then lastly, we did agree to provide them a couple of additional personal days as, as, as the, to account for the work that they do. The financial impact is, is shown in the, in the same format we're required to provide by law, and, and if there are any, any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Neil? 10.7?
Public hearing, anyone in the public want to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Questions for Neil or anyone else, staff? Looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve the bargaining agreement between the City of Sparks and the Association of Sparks Fire Department Classified Chief Officers Unit July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Abbott, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 10.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 10.8, public hearing, consideration of possible approval of the Assistant Senior and Chief Assistant City Attorneys. Go ahead, Neil.
Last three are employee resolutions. This one, as, as Mayor Martini mentioned, is for our city attorneys, is a, is a three-year term, proposed in it, retroactive to July 1st of this year and out through the period of 2020, with a 1.8% cost of living adjustment in each fiscal year and the range is based on CPI, 1, 2, and 3 years to the degree just off the slide, I want to be the, the police department. Similar to what we did with the deputy chiefs, where we rolled back the dependent health care payments from 50 to 25% for anybody who came on the books after July of 2010, where we've got that language included in here, again, in the name of, of equity. The one key difference that we've got here is that we, we did agree to, we did increase the sick leave conversion and cash-out rates that are in each of those tables so that they are a little bit more favorable to the employee with fewer years in. The idea there being that when we get into, you know, our, essentially our, our management and our management professional technical ranks, that we, we do tend to bring a number of employees in mid-career. And so, maybe they're not going to have 30-year career with the city, maybe they're only going to have a 15- or a 20-year career with the city. And, and the thought was that we still wanted to be able to reward them, you know, at the end of their career. Again, what's in it for the city is, you know, we're essentially, we're, you know, we're offering to give them some cash in, you know, the idea that then they, they, they leave the plan and it saves us some money in the long run. So, as, as management, we viewed that as a, as a win-win. But other than that, it's the, it's essentially the, the same, the same deal, if you will, that, that the other groups have seen. With that, I'll, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Neil? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the public like to speak to this particular item? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Questions or questions?
I move to adopt the Assistant Senior and Chief Assistant City Attorneys Resolution Number 3321 for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
Mr. Dare?
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Dare to approve 10.8 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on, 10.9?
10.9 is a, is an employee resolution for our mid-management professional and technical employees. Again, it, it is a three-year proposal, just like what you've, what you've seen earlier today with a term that would be retroactive to July 1st of this year and run out through June 30th of 2020. Cost of living, just like the others, set at 1.8 in this year that we're in now, and then the CPI ranging between 1 and 3 for years two and three in the agreement. The financial impacts here are, do track a little bit differently than they do in, in the others, where our public safety folks are paid almost entirely out of the general fund, our mid-managers are roughly 50/50 on general fund versus other funds, most of those being the various enterprise funds that we operate for, for sewer or, or storm drain or development services. So, this one does not hit the, hit the general fund as, as, as hard in total as, as, as the others. Nevertheless, the financial, the financial impacts are there. The, the group health, in, in terms of dependent care monthly premium payments is here, you know, just like we've done with the other two I've already mentioned, is rolling the 50% level back for employees hired after July of 2010, back to the 25% level so that, again, we have, we have equity across there. And like we did for the attorneys, we are proposing that the sick leave conversion and cash-out rates with fewer years of experience are a little bit richer, if you will, for, for those employees. Same reason, we, we tend to hire folks mid-career into, into this group, and, and so we don't have them necessarily for, for a full 30 years. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question?
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it to the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Questions or questions? Ms. Bybee?
I move to adopt the mid-management professional-
I move to adopt the Mid Management Professional and Technical Resolution Number 3322 for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 10.9. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 10.10, approval of the confidential employee resolution number 3323. Go ahead, Neil.
This one, Mayor Martini, and the council, is for you. I'm trying to do corrective action. I actually heard this at your- at your last meeting, it was a one-year resolution. You recall that our confidential employees are those who otherwise- Their inclusion in seeing confidential information as it relates to personnel issues, collective bargaining, would be members of the operating engineers. So state law requires us to separate them from that because they see that information, and then we have to at least mirror what we've done with the operating engineers. You'll recall there, we did a one-year deal with a 2 percent cost of living. The other item that pertains to these folks is- is the education pay, where we had agreed to increase it from 1,500 a fiscal year to 1,800. You did approve this, as I mentioned, at your- at your last meeting. The corrective action is to get the proper resolution number on the document. We had an incorrect number before, so we would ask you to hold the public hearing again in the name of consistency and erring on the side of caution, and- but after that, our recommendation is still to approve.
Questions for Neil?
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public want to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action or questions. Mr. Dare?
I move to approve the corrective resolution number 3323 between the City of Sparks and the confidential employees for the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dare, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 10.10. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. That's it?
That's it. If you'll indulge me for about 10 more seconds, the status report, there are two, there's one more collective bargaining room, one more employee resolution, collective bargaining room, with the I F F of 1265, firefighters, deputies, and captains, and then the executive resolution after that, and that will be the employee resolutions in the collective bargaining, I anticipate, about over 10. I anticipate we'll be in front of you with both of those on October 23rd. So thank you very much for your indulgence. I know we've all been here for a long time, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. Very well done. Comments from the city council or city managers? Mr. Smith?
You know, I just want to remind everybody that November 2nd, the Nevada Veterans Memorial is having a fundraising dinner at the Pepper Mill, and the reason why I bring that up is because we have a national hero, a Medal of Honor recipient, Ty Carter is going to be our keynote speaker. So I'd ask that everybody that can come out and support not only the memorial, but honor the- one of the gentlemen that received a Medal of Honor. There's only 77 living Medal of- Medal of Honor recipients, so just- just to give you a heads up.
Barbecue Saturday.
Oh, go ahead.
Saturday from noon to 2:00. In the Marina, we're going to be unveiling the sign and the location of the new Veterans Memorial Plaza, so everybody is invited, and I think they said the first 200 people get free hot dogs, so spread the word and come on out and help us follow the location.
Mr. Driscoll?
Mr. Mayor, council, I have two announcements. Number one, due to resignation, the City of Sparks is looking for someone to serve the remaining- remainder of a term on the Sparks Planning Commission. The term runs through December 31st of 2020. This appointee would be eligible for reappointment for additional terms. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application from the city clerk's office. They can apply at www.cityofsparks.us, where you would click on Government on the webpage, and then click on Volunteering for a Sparks Board of Commission, and you would complete the volunteer application. Applications for this position will close, will be accepted until the close of business on October 13th of 2017. Additionally, the following committee appointment is also available for the Civil Service Commission, one member for a partial term that would end on June 30th of 2019. And again, persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You can apply online, www.cityofsparks.us, clicking on Government on the webpage, and under Boards and Commissions, you would click on Volunteering for Sparks Board and Commission, and you would fill out the online application and submit. Applications for this position will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, October 13th at 4:00 p.m. That's all I have, sir.
Seeing no further business, we're- Jared?
I'd like to call an agency meeting for Monday. What are we, September 25th? It's a long day. I don't know what date. Is it September 25th? I'd like to look at the-
Chairperson, Bybee?
Here.
Agency members, Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Yes.
Dare?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We recorm. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, agenda. Looking for approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion?
Prove it.
I have a motion by Member Martini, seconded by Member Smith?
Abbott, I believe.
Member Abbott, please vote. Okay. Okay, motion passes. Item number five, minutes 5.1, looking for a motion to accept the minutes or looking for corrections, if there are any?
Motion proven.
Second.
Motion by Member Smith, seconded by Member Dare. Please vote. Motion passes. Item number six, business item 6.1, reported payment and appropriation transfers for the period of August 10th, 2017 through September 6th, 2017. I have a motion by Member Lawson?
Second.
To approve, seconded by Member Smith. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item number 6.2, consideration of possible approval of Amendment Number One to the Disposition and Development Agreement, AR SRA 311, between SWD Quarry Bridges LLC, the redevelopment agency of the City of Sparks, and the City of Sparks for air, space easement property, and permission for the Bridges residents to park up to 50 passenger vehicles in the city parking garage for possible action. And I have a presentation by Mr. Ornelas.
Chairwoman Bybee, members of the agency board, I'm Armando Ornelas, the Assistant Community Services Director. This is the same agreement as you heard on the city council agenda, so both the city and the parties to it both have to approve it, so if you have any questions.
Second.
Okay. No question by- a motion by Member Smith, seconded by- who seconded it?
Lawson.
Member Lawson. Have any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, moving on to item number 7.2, comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer. Mr. Driscoll, do you have anything? Any of the members have anything? I move- motion to adjourn.